Yeah.
I can't see you, I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Excuse me?
You all ready for reflection?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just hope a lot of people are.
Hello?
Councilman Loa, as soon as they start the meeting, you'll be able to see, because they haven't officially started it yet.
Okay.
Okay, so hang tight, we can see you.
Okay.
Yeah, we get those ones a little while, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, I'll let the mayor know then.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, the webinar is now live, according to the note on my screen. So, welcome everyone. If you have public comments, we're conducting this meeting pursuant to the governor's orders. Kind of doing a little bit of a hybrid with in-person and Zoom. I have a couple council members that are zooming in today. For public comments, your public comment on the e-comment cut off at four o'clock today. For verbal comment during the meeting, if you're watching on Zoom, I'm not going to give you the Zoom whole link here. You can look at it online on the city webpage, and there's a link on there that'll give you the whole webinar attendee link. And there's a button on there that you can insert comments. If you're on the phone, you can raise your hand on the phone by dialing which is a pound what, was it star what? For ongoing comments during the meeting? Instructions are there someplace.
Star six.
Star six when you call in, yeah. And that will get you into the queue. So, we'll call the meeting to order. City Clerk, could you call a roll call, please?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Puchim, Vice Chair Bettencourt?
Here.
Councilmembers, Commissioners Carrillo?
He's here.
Loa?
Here.
Bishop?
Here.
Commissioners Brown?
Here.
And Fragasans? Thank you.
Okay, we have the entire council and Housing Commission. Do we have any public comments on closed session items? Oh, here it is, if you're attending the meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. On a personal computer, click the raise your hand button. Press star six when you're called on to unmute yourself, state your name, begin speaking. There's a maximum of three minutes, you're not obligated to take it all. City Clerk?
Not at this time, ma'am.
Okay, IT, nothing? Okay, everything. Okay, so seeing none, we'll close public comments. And presentation of the city attorney, please, sir?
Thank you, Your Honor. The items to be discussed in closed session are just those listed on the agenda.
Excellent. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn to five o'clock. We'll recess to closed session, and we'll return back out here for the seven o'clock meeting. Thank you.
And, um, come back from our closed session meeting. And, uh, city attorney, can you report out from the closed session, please, sir?
Thank you, your honor. As to item four point one, existing litigation, CDA versus Palmdale, all members were present with member, uh, council member Carrillo absent for part of the item. Council Housing Authority successor agency was provided an update on this matter. There's no further reportable action at this time. As to items four point two and four point three, all council members were present with council member Carrillo absent. Four point two anticipated litigation, one case. Councils provide an update on this matter and gave unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item four point three, Griff versus City of Palmdale, council was providing an update on this matter and gave unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. And that concludes my report. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, sir. Well, welcome, everybody. We will, um, uh, conclude the, uh, five o'clock special session. And we will, uh, as for roll call for the, um, seven o'clock meeting, please. City clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Proton Bettencourt?
Here.
Council member Carrillo?
Any on the line?
He said he would be here.
He's not on the line, mayor.
All right, somebody follow up, find out. Uh, go ahead.
Council member Loa?
Here.
And council member Bishop?
I am here.
And we need, uh, uh, we have roll call on the, um, on the housing authority as well?
Commissioners Brown and Fragasans?
Okay, so you'll come up in a moment. Okay. So, uh, we'll do, uh, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence and honor of our troops. I'd like us also to, um, uh, it was down at the press conference for the, uh, slain firefighters. I'd like us to keep everybody there and their families, uh, in, um, in our, um, thoughts and, uh, prayers this evening. It's a rough situation, folks, and, uh, uh, I think it's gonna, I don't know if it's gonna get, how, how that gets better. So, at any point in time. So, can you please, uh, rise and, uh, let me see here. Ramiro, can I get you to, uh, come up and lead us in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, invisible, and will take justice for all.
Thank you. And I jumped that a little bit out of order. I apologize. But, uh, so we have, uh, presentations this evening. Um, Mr. Murphy, you're first up on this.
Good evening, mayor, council. Um, it's good to have people back in, uh, the chambers here.
Welcome, everybody, by the way. Thank you for being here, Tony.
And, uh...
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, give yourselves a hand for showing up. You've made it a year and some. Here you are.
So, uh, you know, I've stood up here, uh, for over a year talking about, uh, Warrior Award winners. And, uh, this is kind of a really extra special one. Uh, uh, Mr. Crumlish, will you and, uh, Sarah please come up? So, I'm gonna read you, uh, the nomination, but then I'm gonna also talk about some of the details that may not be in the nomination. So, there was a, uh, a fire that, uh, totally destroyed a local veteran's home. And during a routine inspection of the property that was burned, uh, Sarah dropped everything she was doing with her family out of town on her day off and drove back to, uh, Palmdale to help David with an unfortunate situation. The resident, a seventy-five-year-old Vietnam veteran, has been living in the house since nineteen fifty-five. It was in dire straits, but he didn't want to vacate his home. Now, this talks about his home, but I have pictures that his home was destroyed. There was no, there was just rubble, but he did not want to vacate. It took Sarah and David over six hours to commence him the house was no longer safe to live in. With Sarah's love and dedication to our community and David's successful efforts, not to mention staying six hours past his shift on a Friday night, they found resources for this resident and were able to help him find a place to stay. David and Sarah worked together and did what was right, given the circumstances. And I will tell you that why it's not in the nomination, that when we talk about the level of employees we have, they came out of their own pocket to put this gentleman up for, uh, days, if not more than that. I was aware of the, the first couple. Uh, so, we are truly blessed to have, uh, individuals as city employees and community members who, who care enough about people that they had no idea who they were three days before this incident. Yet, they were so selfless in, in their servant leadership. Uh, I feel like the Warrior Award's not enough, but you two, uh, really epitomize why we honor our employees with this award. So, it's a, it's a pleasure for me to give this to you. So, uh, I think we should let David wear it. We'll see. Uh, it won't mess up your hair. Sarah's got better hair. There you go. We'll get a picture with you there.
Oh, don't put down.
There you go. Get in, Sarah. Oh, yeah, you can come up. We got the pomperachi and sort of domination. We're sitting in the mayor's chair. I think it's worth the mayor's chair.
Mayor, we all got the chair for...
Either you guys wanna say anything or... Oh, John's not gonna let you get out of it? You guys are taking, wearing a mask on? Sorry. All right, get in here. All right, everyone close their eyes. We're gonna take a picture without masks. No one's watching. You wanna say something or...
I'm not putting the helmet back. I just wanna say, um, thank you for our team, code enforcement, and anybody else who's here within the city to represent and, and be here. We really appreciate it. But, um, we try to do a lot of good things. We don't always see the good side, uh, with code enforcement. But this is very rewarding to, to be able to help somebody who is really in need. Um, so it was, it was a, it was a great day to, to do it together. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great work. You take it, you know, you divide up who's gonna have it in their office.
So, I, I just wanna add that, that y'all do a really good job. These two here are kinda like, they end up, I don't know whether you're drawing the short straw and the tough jobs or what the deal is, but... But, folks, these are the guys that are problem solvers. And that's really what code enforcement's all about. So thanks for taking care of the guy with no pants the other day, too. They park a lot, so. Yeah, well, there you go. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So George Davis, will you come up? This next presentation is for some community partners. We're really supporting public art. And George, you know pronunciation of all these people, so I'm not gonna let the mayor, or I butcher it. So, or you can say Mr. Miss Guard, you know, who, whatever. But you want to talk about the project and...
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll take a quick minute to just say a little bit about the project. Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor, JJ. As you know, Pieced Together was a project that we put together to bring together community members as volunteers to beautify our neighborhoods, to bring some color into the streets of Palmdale and to bring people together in the process of doing that. We had some amazing volunteers show up for the installation in April that really blew me away. They brought a lot of heart and soul to that project.
Oh, thank you, sir. Hello?
Okay, gotcha. And so, but aside from all the volunteers that came, we had three exceptional leaders that really helped us out with this project. The first one was Hector Corrado from Dunn Edwards, who advised us on the types of product that we needed to use to best execute that project. He was there with me at the very beginning, advised us all the way through. He volunteered his time for the days of the installation. And he really connected with all the rest of the volunteers and really made it a joyful experience. And then we also had two artist leaders assist us. Christopher Minsal and Soshil Garcia, that have been working together for the past year in Little Rock on projects. And I knew they were gonna, they were gonna bring a lot of great expertise to this project. But what I didn't expect is that they were gonna connect with all the rest of the volunteers and really make them feel excited about the project that they were participating in. So having said that, I want to ask you to please come forward so we can recognize you.
You guys have seen some of those great murals as you're going out to 138 through Little Rock, right? And these are the guys that have been doing those projects. So when this came up, we knew that we'd get a great product and a lot of energy out of this thing. Oh, wait a second here.
Yeah, Jewish, dark guy, color cornet. Kill him. Kill him.
Oh, up there. That's okay.
Kate, a mask?
Masked up.
Oh, yeah, masked up.
It says mask. Everybody close their eyes on the grid.
We're out.
And this is coming up, isn't it?
Yeah, we're doing it again this weekend.
All right, we're doing it again this weekend. But how about a round of applause? You know, we haven't had a public art position, and we created a council, and the mayor supported it last year with Kerry Smith and her team pushing, pushing, pushing. And George started as a part-time employee and moved to full-time. But how about a round of applause? All the work you're doing, I think you're really doing a good job to infuse public art as a key component of the future of our city. So kudos to you, George. You can tell everybody, this weekend?
Yes. So we're repeating this weekend. We're repeating this weekend, so it's a thank you and also hope to see you guys this weekend at Marie Kirk Park. We're doing the same installation, the rainbow colors, at the crosswalks in front of Best of the West. There are three crosswalks, so by the end of this weekend, those will be nice and colorful. And, you know, this is just the beginning for us. So we're looking forward to doing a lot more of these projects here in Palmdale and making your city look beautiful.
Thanks. All right, so we tried to do this last year and ran into all that COVID restrictions. And we did a real nice proclamation. And I still have a copy sitting on the shelf in my garage to get over and get out to the outreach center. But can I have our Human Rights Committee members? And I think we had some, did we have somebody from the outreach center here this evening? Did we have, yes, come on up, come on up. All right, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have each one of you, first of all, tell us who you are. I know who you are, but I want you to tell the community who you are.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Ramiro Gomez-Galliano. I am a freshman, well, now a sophomore at USC, where I study non-governmental organizations and social change with double minors in social work and juvenile justice, nonprofits, philanthropy, and volunteerism. And it's an honor to serve here as a community member and as well as CEO and founder of Youth Led 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Thank you.
And he is the prince of trash. He is one of the guys that is just bringing, bringing so many youth volunteers out to help us get the trash out. And we're focusing over there at the Beryl Springs area, along with Chris Fragga, our planning commissioner. And over 400 tons we pulled out of that one area. And a lot of that has been the young, strong backs that he's bringing, so thanks for that. Okay, Sky?
I'm Sky Jung, and I'm a volunteer, longtime volunteer, over 24 years with the Annual Fair. And just great to be here tonight. Thank you.
Hi there, everybody. Thank you, councilmembers and commissioners. My name is Michael McIntosh. I'm a local business owner. I own Trio Coffee House. Strong advocate LGBTQ+ rights. And I'm happy to see that City of Palmdale is giving this proclamation. I think we need to hear more from this side of the community. And that's me.
Thank you.
Hi there, guys. My name is Jose Carrión. I volunteer my time at the Outreach Center in Lancaster. I am currently the get-out volunteer there. I do all the get-out meetings and what to get our community more out there in the public and try to work with some of the local businesses like Michael and so.
Hi, my name is Frank Macias. I'm actually the vice president of the Outreach Center. Have been with the organization since the beginning. Started with the youth program and kind of just never left. So that's about it.
My name is Felipe Reyna. I'm on the 50th DAA with the Annual Fair, and I'm also on the Palmdale Human Rights Commission.
My name is Cynthia Underwood. I work for the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office, and I'm also a painter. And I'm very pleased to be part of this group and hopefully get a lot more exposure and community togetherness for the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Aurora, and I've been living here for, I want to say maybe like four or five years, but I've been visiting here much longer. I work with a nonprofit here in the city, but I actually just transferred to the Valley. But I am very involved in the different activities that are happening. I'm in the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I'm also very happy to be part of this group.
Thank you. We've got a lot of talent here with these folks. And we're trying to find more ways to tap that talent and that, and that energy, that entrepreneurship, and everything else that goes along with that. So I want to thank all of you. I mean, I've learned a lot just in my short time of being able to interface with some of you. I'm looking forward to having more conversations with you guys up there. I know it's been real crazy with the COVID requirements up there. But I just, I want to thank you all for being here. So we kind of missed this last time. And probably should have had like a bunch of these printed up. But we'll see about fixing some of that. But JJ, you want to go ahead and read this for us? And...
I'd be honored to. Proclamation, LB LGBTQ Pride Month 2021. Whereas the City of Palmdale has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning community and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas many residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the City of Palmdale who contribute to the enrichment of our city are part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community. And whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of the lesbian, gay men, bisexual, transgendered, and questioning persons throughout the nation and around the world, making it important for cities like Palmdale to stand up and show support for our residents who are affected. And whereas several cities across the United States recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQ Pride Month. And whereas June has become symbolic month in which lesbians, gay men, bisexual people, transgender, questioning, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. And I would argue, believe it that. Now therefore, Mayor Stephen D. Hoffbauer, Mayor of the City of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby deem an honor and pleasure to proclaim June 2021 as LGBTQ Pride Month and invite everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. And you...
And that's what it's about, you know? Who cares what, who cares what people's, you know, various orientations or family arrangements are? We have, we have a great, diverse community here. And, you know, it's, so what I'm gonna do is, I would like you guys, if you could, to hang this over, over there. And I'm gonna bring the other one by and make you hang, get your own frame for that one, too. So, all right? Okay, and John, how do you want to do this? You guys shift, so.
There you go. All right, everybody look at me now. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Ready?
And I, I just thought it was important to put a face with the name and the issue. And that's why I asked all you guys to come out here, you know? And don't be shy about your coffee shop either, man. You got some of the best coffee around, so. And as you guys are done, you may not want to sit through all the other boring stuff. So feel free if you want to bail out. And we have a deputy be recognized tonight, right, JJ?
Deputy of the Year. I think it's best to hand this over to Cam Shafer.
Thank you very much. I would like to start with really thanking the city and the council for your support. It is second to none. The fact that you've had the police memorial for two years in a row now, that COVID has impacted that, not to mention all the memorials that you've conducted, too. Thank you very much for the support that we get. It's very nice that you're honoring code enforcement earlier today because they are great partners with us as well. We have a Deputy of the Year that we do every year at Palmdale Station, and we do it through soliciting the supervisors for feedback. And I truly thought I had found the unicorn of emails this year. Because I'd sent a message out, I said, hey, who is the 2021 Deputy of the Year? I got a plethora of email responses. I thought truly I had found the email formula to get responses from people. But as it turns out, it was truly the deputy. And we are gonna honor Deputy Andrew Delarosa. So you may wonder what, what goes into the selection process of a Deputy of the Year? Is it writing tickets? Is it ability to jump over to the hood of a car like Starsky and Hutch? I may be deep myself there. But no, truly it's not. It is productivity. It's the work that they do. Andrew joined us in 2015 for the Sheriff's Department. He worked in jail, and he's been at Palmdale for the last four years. And year over year, there's a growth process that you learn to be in the car. You learn to work. You learn to communicate with people. But what we found is that his family did an amazing job raising him. He is a local talent. He is from the AV. He is from Palmdale. And that is what we are continuing to seek on the Sheriff's Department. Local talent to serve in the public safety realm in Palmdale and throughout Los Angeles County. Very prolific as far as business and contacting the public, but he's got a passion for the public, too. And as most adults do, they, they have a heart for children. And Andrew himself has a heart for children. And the outreach that he does to the youth in our community is amazing. So without a doubt, overwhelming support from the supervision at the station of Palmdale. Could not have picked a better deputy at Palmdale. So thank you very much, sir.
All right, we're gonna reset.
Kerry is on the line, I believe.
Kerry, I don't know if you can hear us.
There we go.
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are featuring, I just thought we would go out all out and do four Q Qritters tonight. So we have Rocky and Leila. Unfortunately, both of them are owner surrenders from the same household because the owner had too many cats. They are described as being very friendly, very cuddly. If they could go together, that would be fantastic, but obviously they would take them separate as well. We have a fantastic promotion going on for LA County Animal Care and Control for cats this June, $5. So if you are interested in adopting either Rocky or Leila, you get a fantastic deal, but again, you cannot put a price on love. We also have Chug, look at those eyes, and Adella. And Adella is an animal care center favorite. I just got off the phone with the volunteer coordinator, and she just completely is gaga over Adella. If you are interested in adopting one of the pets there, you can make an appointment at the Palmdale Animal Care Center Or you can email them at palmdale@la county dot animal care and control dot gov and make an appointment to see one of these guys or one of the other many, many adorable, adoptable pets that are out there. And also wanted to just do a quick PSA... And also wanted to just do a quick, uh, PSA that again, there is a, um, an amnesty on uh, pet licensing, so if you've been amiss and, uh, have not had your pet licensed in a little bit, all, um, penalties are forgiven. So you will just be paying the, um, actual price for the animal, and you get a fantastic discount if your animals are spayed and neutered. So it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that your pets are spayed and neutered. So, um, again, wonderful animals, and if you adopt any of them, uh, contact us at Palmdale Public Safety, uh, or six six one two six seven five one seven zero, cause you are in for a fantastic goodie bag that will go along with, uh, one of these adorable pets. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Carrie. So, yeah, there's, there's always more critters over there, so, uh, if you don't see the one that you like, there will be one over there for you, so. Um, and Carrie's always got a great, uh, goodie bag full of stuff there for you. Alright, uh, so I need a waiver, a full reading of resolutions and ordinances on the agenda this evening.
All moved, Richard Loa.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by, uh, Mr. Loa, second by Ms. Bettencourt. City Clerk.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fragasans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, item twelve, public comments. Now's the time for public participation for any person wishing to speak to the City Council or the Housing Authority on matters listed or not listed on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the City Council and the Housing Authority. If you're attending the meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. We'll get the cue from, uh, our IT staff here to, um, unmute you and come on in. If you're attending by personal computer, again, raise your hand and, uh, we'll find a way to identify you and call you in here. Uh, when you're told to, um, uh, press star six to unmute yourself, state your name, uh, and then go ahead and begin speaking. There's a total of, uh, three minutes, um, on each, uh, for each speaker here, um, but, uh, we all know you can get the history of the world in three minutes, so if you don't need it, don't feel obligated, so. Anyways, uh, uh, City Clerk, do you have anybody queued up?
Not on the Zoom call, Mayor, but we do have a couple residents who are present who would like to speak to non-agenda items.
Okay. Do you have a speaker slip on any of them?
Not for this-
If you have a speaker slip, um, that helps us keep track, and, uh, state law allows us to ask for that, but if you don't wanna give it, call yourself Mickey Mouse or whatever, that's up to you, so.
Hi, Marsha.
My name is Mickey Mouse.
On Carroll's side in Palmdale. I would like to speak, uh, this time on the, item on the consent calendar. Fifteen point four, approve permits for fireworks booths. As many of my fellow neighbors in Palmdale are experiencing, the weekends are becoming the prelude to the upcoming Fourth of July. The state of California has made it unlawful to possess or set off fireworks not deemed by the California Fire Marshal as safe and sane fireworks. Passing laws is great, but the state has also chosen not to enforce that law, leaving it to the cities and citizens to struggling to cope with this, with the irresponsible, with their irresponsible neighbors. The sale of safe and sane fireworks allows households to enjoy our Fourth of July and support organizations that benefit Palmdale's clubs and churches. I hope you will approve this voter-generated issue and allow responsible folks a safe and sane Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, well said.
Mayor, we do have, uh, one speaker slip.
Okay.
It is from, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Chelsea Humphrey? From the Salvation Army. You're the director, I believe, so, okay.
Hi, how did the, uh, how the raffle thing with all the gift baskets go?
It went really great. It went so great. We raised like five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it looked like you had some great stuff, so.
It was awesome. It was awesome. Thank you for your support. So hello, Council, my name is Lieutenant Chelsea Humphrey, and I am the director of the Salvation Army in the Antelope Valley. And I was just coming here to thank you and to thank the council, the City of Palmdale, the Housing Authority, and saves for their partnership in the HPRP program, which is our rapid rehousing program. We could not do what we do without the support of the city, and we have been able to help a lot of individuals, mostly single mothers, get into housing with their children, women who are staying in their cars with their kiddos. So we are so grateful, and I just wanted to come and thank you for that. Well, thank you for what you do. Thank you.
And we, uh, we value the partnership with you very much. We, we, we know what you're doing good out there.
Yeah, we love it, we love it, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, you have anybody else? Anybody, or any, anybody on the queue?
Yes. Sorry.
On advice of the City Clerk, this is the way I was told to do this. My name is not Mickey Mouse, my name is Marsha Furman, and I still live on Carroll's side. I'd like to speak about, uh, non-agenda items. The scheduled twice-a-month street sweeper that breezes by my house is paid for, I assume, somehow through my property taxes. My thinking is that since I pay for it, it should happen, but it doesn't. My surrounding neighbors choose to park their long-term cars in front of my home, leaving their curbs sparkling clean. Decades ago, the reason for not posting sweeper signs was at Palmdale's rapid growth and the re, and the rerouting of the sweepers. That is not the case now. Dates and time signs will move my neighbors' cars, clean my curb, and maybe bring in some revenue for the city. Our water park is a joy. My family, as you all know, really enjoys it. The paint jobs, Carrie, are fantastic. The paint job, the murals, if you have, and around the little miners, outstanding. I would love to say that it's perfect, but it's come to my attention, it's in need of a security system that all, that is all too common these days. We, we stake out our chairs, deposit our bags and towels, and head for the water. Kids move around, slide to slide, river to racers. Securing a visual record of everyone's movements is a way to encourage good and safe behavior. Right now, the water park has no cameras in the water area or the parking lot, where many folks leave their valuable items. Thank you.
So let me, uh, let me just help you on that street sweeping thing. I've gotten like three calls in the last week on this. Um, and then this is what'll help, because right now it's every other week, and how do you put that up there on thing? So unless we rework the schedule with the street sweeping, which is actually part of the trash contract, um, I'm trying to be real brief here. If you notify us, you send us an email, we'll get ahold of, of traffic, and what they can do is they'll come out, if there's a lot of cars that have got junk stuck, you know, stuck underneath there, and it's obvious it hasn't been done, they will post temporary signs, uh, at least seventy-two hours in advance of the next street sweeping, so they can get in there and get that done, and it maybe help educate those people that, hey, the street sweeping's gotta happen over here.
But, but saying like this, the way, even the way the street sweeper is presented to the citizens, it's like the first and third, you know, day of, of, they, they don't necessarily say a time.
Right.
You know, but they do say, you know, that the first and third, uh, Wednesdays of the month are, are gonna be your streets, uh, sweeping day.
So we went away from that because we got more flexible and additional service by going to every other week as opposed to first and third.
Well, it, it, you know, uh, the first and, yeah, well, no matter what-
I know, you, you kinda preached it to the Pope on this. But let's try this, if it doesn't work, you'll be the fourth person this week, and I'll talk to Public Works about it.
Yeah, I do call, I actually, Code, Code Enforcement, I usually give them a couple weeks to move their cars, and then I call Code Enforcement, they've been out, you know, I just, um, ditto on the, on the cars, and they just, the cars drive around the block and, and then park one, you know, uh, ten feet up, and, and still in front of my house, and it still doesn't move, I don't, I don't understand. But anyway, I was looking for a solution. I appreciate it.
We'll see if we can try to get some resolution for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks. Okay, did you have anybody else? JJ, did you have anybody else? Nope. I don't think, I, IT, did you have anybody queued up?
No, not at this time.
Anybody else out there that, um, on an agenda or non-agenda item? Okay, um, now, I'm gonna ask, I had talked with, uh, the Fair Board, and I asked them to come in and, um, tell us a little bit about some stuff they've got going here during our public comment period. I think this is, uh, uh, we could've waited and done a whole big, um, uh, scheduled agenda deal and everything, but, uh, time is of the essence here, uh, on, uh, on your issues. So if you'd like to come up and, uh, introduce yourself and let us know what you got, and I, I think you brought, uh, brought some informational material that, that the City Clerk will share?
Yes, uh, I had a PowerPoint that was sent over.
You know what? Pull the mic up a little bit, and if you wanna pull that off, we got the shield in front of you there, so we can hear you.
Uh, my name is Giovanni Simi, and I'm the chairman of the Rural Olympics Committee, and I'm also the chairman of the Alavelli Rural Museum, along with my compadres here that are both on the Fair Board and on our committees. Uh, Bill Rollins, Dino Ward, Debbie Dino-
Debbie.
-and Gary Van Damme. The main purpose of coming over here this evening was to issue a challenge to the City Council to join us at the Fourth of Joint, Fourth of July- fireworks and, uh, good old Patriot Party.
You gonna get to dunk somebody in the booth? I'm hoping that's where you're going. Nah, not a chance, huh?
We're going to have a, um, a demo of the Rural Olympics at the Fourth of July, and we're gonna do the, uh, our potato race, our world-famous potato race. The last time the City Council was involved in this, we, uh, had to help, um, Mayor Rex win because he doesn't like losing. And, uh, so we, uh, my daughter was his driver. We, um, baked the potatoes so they would, uh, smash on the city manager, eh, not be able to quite complete all five potatoes, so. We, we won't do that at this event. We will, uh, make sure everything's fair and legal. And also, we would like to see if the City Council would bring over some of their staff to do a tug-of-war with, uh, Lancaster also. We're gonna do two events there.
I think we got Crumlish and, uh, Roots, what do you think?
Now, if, if you're over fifty-five-
Tell them they have to have two ladies in the group.
Okay, two ladies in the group. If you're over fifty-five, I don't recommend doing the tug-of-war because, uh, but you can if you want to, you know, you know, the tough people. That's where my back went out several years ago, so. Anyway, um, do you have that PowerPoint just to?
We don't have it up on the screen, sir, but we do have the actual printout of the PowerPoint that has been applied at the Council's-
Technology.
Alright.
And Debbie, were you gonna talk to us about the, uh, who the kids do for a moment, will you?
The, uh, first page, of course, says Rural Olympics at the Antelope Valley Fair. The second pages are Les Fradeen with Jerry and Rowdy. These are old-time pictures that we have in the museum. On the second page, we have Ernie Bailey, an old militia racing a tractor. Uh, lower left is Wayne Arnold. We have both of these tractors in the Rural Museum. Um, the lower right is, uh, Ray McCormick as a youngster. He is long since retired and is over in Arizona now. The next picture is Otis Fairchild. And of course, um, many of you know Ralph Bozigan, he's one of our most famous directors, although we have two, three great ones right here tonight.
Good recovery.
The, uh, next page has Scott Rollings and Newt driving a, um, Model T in the, uh, I think this was the first potato race, wasn't it?
Was it the first one?
Yeah.
That was my dad's car.
Later on, you see an, an older one, uh, that's Mike Tussi and Mariah Boda, and they're in a, uh, same old beat-up stuff. This one's probably one of the worst ones that actually made it down the, the strip. We had to push-start it.
Just a little patina on it.
Yeah, patina, that's what you call that. The next page is, uh, Frank Laurie at our tractor race. Um, we have two of these tractors, or will have two of these tractors in the museum. One of them's there now that was restored by my next-door neighbor. Randy Hall and Christina Ortiz, and then Red Dog Mansberger, longtime truck driver in the valley. On the next page is our hay loading contest, which we have Butch Godey, and then our hay stealing contest. I think this is, um, you can't see faces on either one, but I think this is, uh, Jason Kyle. On the next page is Butch Godey again, hay loading, and then we have, can't tell by the tinted windows, but I believe that's Scott Harder in the hay wagon. Then we're trying to, uh, bring in our youth. We have the wrestling teams from Quartz Hill, Highland, Lancaster, and Palmdale coming in. And this, at the Fourth of July, we're trying to get all of the local high schools with a tug-of-war team. Part of the problem with the, when the fair happens, it's football season, the first week of, of training, so the football team can't come in, so we've been getting the wrestling teams, cause they come in usually, well, with this screwy schedule that they've got now, they usually come in in, uh, after January. And, uh, the team that you see on the left is Highland, and then a Quartz Hill participant, he's the anchor in this particular one. And then, on the last page, the, uh, second-to-last page of the presentation is my wife's grandfather, although I got to call him Grandpa Jake, and, uh, he's the founder of the Rural Olympics. And then this is an artist's rendering of our museum that is now, um, built, at least phase one is, we're looking at phase two, which we're also gonna invite you to participate in. Maybe the City of Palmdale can put in a, uh, um, some historical artifacts that they have in there. Everybody's got a rat hole someplace that they keep this stuff in. And then on the last page is what we're doing, the fireworks at the Fourth of July, so, um... Any questions?
I think that, uh, it's one of the most fun events, uh, short of a, short of a demolition derby, you know? But the Rural Olympics are, uh, really speak to the heritage of the valley and, uh, the, uh, and historical nature of agriculture and what it meant to this growing area. So thank you for keeping that tradition alive, and I hope we'll all take the opportunity to participate on that, so.
Ten plus a coach.
And we have training day for Jesus.
Think?
And using a, a city vehicle or something to do the potato race is, we're not gonna go total antique on this, uh, this particular part of it, we'll go with just two vehicles, anything you-
JJ, see if we get a street sweeper, okay?
We can use my truck as a-
I saw that, street sweeper, we got it. Lightning motor. Debbie, can you tell us about the kids feeding kids? I just fed a pig breakfast yesterday.
Well, we're in our third year of our kids feeding kids program, and, uh, I'm excited to say that so far, every year, we have increased the amount of money that we have received in donations. Uh, last year, even with COVID, we were able to purchase four more pigs than we did the year before. Uh, a little bit about it, we won the Merrill Award, which is the biggest award you can win for Western Affairs Association, which covers all the way- which covers all the way to fairs um through the Mississippi, am I right? So, it was my first year, I did not know anything about the Merrill Award. I was thrown up on stage and we won it, yes! So, we have pigs around the valley, we take donations, we take your firstborn, we'll take anything that we could- can get to get money, I'm just kidding. It all goes back to saves and to Grace Resources, and it- it, we are the only supplier of fresh, homegrown food grown by our kids in this valley. That's something to say for our kids. Our- our livestock kids are great. They turn out to be great young leadership in this, in- in the nation, within our country, in our- in our local area. We need to support them. So, the challenge is out there now for you guys for, and we are the first we've come to talk to. We go to see Lancaster on the eighth, so you have the upper hand right now. Sorry, Rex, um but that's just the way it is. You know, it would be, it would be a first to have both of the city councils uh do s- do something for the Rural Olympics on the Fourth of July, so thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Debbie, if people wanna donate, how do- how do they do that?
You can go to avfair.com and uh type in Kids Feeding Kids, and there's, it'll take you right to it.
Okay, great.
Alright.
And how many, how many of the uh uh the pig banks have you got out there right now?
Right now?
Roughly?
I have ten, I have eleven, I have eleven out there.
So a lot of them are in restaurants?
There are several in restaurants, I have two over at City of Lancaster, hint, hint, I'd like to bring some over to City of Palmdale. And uh the rest of them are at uh Speedy Joe's, uh Jack's Place out in Leona Valley, uh Crazy Autos on Avenue I, and gosh, I can't think of the rest, sorry. It's up on Facebook, I'm-
Yeah, see that big, big old pig? Yeah.
Yes, that was, that was made by one of our uh our livestock kids. That was cool, it's a cool one. Yeah, you guys need pigs. Alright, thank you for your time.
Thanks, you guys, thank you very much. Alright, so uh we had uh, I just got uh notified, we had um, we have uh comments on the Public Arts Commission that have been uh submitted and filed, and we have a speaker form from uh Mr. Don Hoprich, Don? Somehow this got missed somewhere in line.
That's my fault, Mayor, I apologize.
That's okay, my name is Don Hoprich, I'm a- a resident of Palmdale. Uh the reason I come before you is that I noticed on the Agenda Item fifteen-four about the fireworks permits, uh I noticed the uh the number three slot uh talks to the Alamo Valley Chambers of Commerce being approved for a per- permit or going to be approved for a per- permit. I know that the Palmdale Chamber of Commerce was absorbed by the uh uh and then Lancaster Chamber of Commerce, they came together and they became the Alamo Valley Chamber of Commerce. But I don't believe, under the requirements of issuing the permit, that they really qualify under the Alamo Valley Chambers of Commerce to qualify for a permit to sell fireworks. Uh they don't really have, that I know of, a business office here in the uh Palmdale area, and uh they certainly don't have over fifty percent of their membership uh being served by businesses of Palmdale. So I would suggest that, or I would, I asked the uh uh Carleen Saxton uh why they were approved, uh and she came back with a bunch of information about Palmdale Chamber and so forth, but Palmdale Chamber doesn't exist anymore, it's been dissolved, and- and so what they have uh you know, it just doesn't, doesn't exist anymore. And she also says that the Palmdale Chamber, uh they had a DBA that they're operating under the Palmdale Chamber of Commerce, and they operate out of eight seventeen East Avenue Q nine. And if you uh stick your head out the door, you're gonna see that that's the Alamo Valley Black Chamber of Commerce. There's nothing there that talks about Palmdale Chamber of Commerce or Alamo Valley Chambers of Commerce. So uh I just don't see where they would qualify for a permit to uh to be issued a permit according to the city guidelines.
Okay, thanks. The name on the door thing, we've been working with them, uh they have rights and space uh for the uh combined chambers to operate out of there, and I asked some of the same questions you did about several of these, that one included, and they have a legit DBA that uh that was looked into and- and verified, so uh and in that-
DBA for what?
Uh as for the Palmdale Chamber.
Palmdale Chamber doesn't exist.
Well, under the DBA, it does though, so.
But in California, the Palmdale Chamber does not exist.
Yeah. No, no, they- they were, but they have, they have the DBA to operate that. Is Carleen here? Carleen, can you come up and explain that for- for us, so that we're all on the same page? Did I get your memo earlier? Yes, we can, thank you, good point. Alright, so with that, we'll, we'll take it up during the item. Um council, um we're um we're at uh consent calendar items here. Richard?
I think we have to close public comments.
We are twelve, we're closing twelve, and then you'll go to Housing Authority.
What are you talking about?
We're closing twelve twelve.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to close public hearings?
There's not a public hearing, so we don't have to close it.
Or public comments, then?
So.
We don't have to close public comments?
No, we don't, but we can, so. A- anybody opposed? I'll second it, no, so ordered then. Okay, um hous- uh thirteen, Housing Authority Consent Calendar. I will move on to thirteen. Um I see that we have our Housing Authority is all up here already, so I'll scratch that off. Um again, anything on the uh Housing Authority, anybody wants to pull?
Yes, I do, thirteen point one.
Okay, anything else? That leaves a minute, do we have a motion then on thirteen-two?
Move to approve?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have uh Mr. Bishop and uh Ms. Fragasans for first and a second on thirteen-two. City Clerk?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro temp Vice Chair Betancourt?
Yes.
Council Members Directors Carrillo?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Commissioner Brown? And Commissioner Fragasans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so thirteen point one, that was the one the Lieutenant was up on speaking about earlier. Uh who's the um, that can be you? Giving us some uh background on this. Richard, did you have a specific question, or did you want a staff report?
I- I do want a staff report, but I do have a question. I'm- I'm just wondering, I looked at the uh health and safety codes, uh three-three-four-one-three and three-three-four-one-eight. I think uh there was a discussion between uh Mr. Beck and staff over at Housing. Uh I'm just wondering, it says those code sections refer to housing that's been destroyed per this uh redevelopment agencies. Yeah, I'm just wondering how it is that um this particular sum that is being allocated here. And I don't have a problem with that allocation, I'm just trying to make sure that the code sections do provide the authority for the allocation of this money. I don't recall that we've had redevelopment agency uh properties or the process of redevelopment agencies destroying any properties, which is what that code refers to, and then the agency under three-three-four-one-eight, uh the agency is to monitor the um reconstruction of any housing that's been lost. So how is it that we qualify for that under this particular code?
So?
I- I posed this question earlier to the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Loa. So I was able to identify the code sections, I pulled them up, and if you'll bear with me for just a second with the rote resuscitation of the law. Uh the allocation of funding here for the rapid rehousing is provided under Health and Safety Code Section three-four-one-seven-six-point-one. And it reads, uh notwithstanding a few other sections, the housing successor may expend up to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per fiscal year for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing services for individuals and families who are homeless or would be homeless, but for the assistance. It reads that as long as you have fulfilled the obligations of Health and Safety Code Section three-three-four-one-three and three-three-four-one-eight. Briefly, three-three-four-one-eight is a responsibility to maintain a list and monitor affordable housing units in low and moderate income developments within the city. It's really a uh data gathering and reporting mechanism. Three-three-four-one-three is, and again, I'll read here because I think it makes it the clearest, it's essentially whenever a unit is withdrawn from, an affordable unit is withdrawn from the market, so either by being destroyed or by other mechanisms, including expiration of a covenant restricting the affordability of the unit. But what it states is whenever dwelling units, housing persons and families of low or moderate income are destroyed or removed from the low, moderate income housing market as part of redevelopment project, that is subject to a written agreement with the agency or where financial assistance has been provided by the agency, the agency shall, shall within four years of destruction removal rehabilitate, develop, or construct, or cause to be rehabilitated, uh develop or construct additional units to an effective number. This really relates back to, so at a federal level, there's the fair cloth limits, which are the amount of affordable units that can exist within a city. What this is saying is it's the state law from nineteen sixty-three that says that if a unit is destroyed or removed from inventory, then it will, for all intents and purposes, be replaced at the ratio prescribed within the code. So that's what they're certifying in the staff order. What they're saying is they're making the findings as required by Health and Safety Code three-four-one-seven-six-point-one, that over the course of time, the redevelopment agency, the successor agency there, rather, has complied with these requirements, and so they're eligible to trigger Paragraph Two, which authorized them to receive the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
So there's, so based, based on that assessment, then um we're, the language accurately covers what we wanna do here?
It does, and it reads that the, what's written in the background section of the staff report is nearly verbatim from the code section three-four-one-seven-six-point-one, and they're making a certification that we've been complying with those.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't see that uh that code section referred to in the report, but uh thank you for the clarification, I just don't recall that we've had any housing destroyed uh through the redevelopment process or removed from uh the market in recent times. Have we had any such instances?
Not lately, huh?
Okay, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we're in compliance with these code sections when we make these reports to HCD.
We are in compliance currently, thank you.
Okay, I'm getting affirmative.
Alright, and we have an existing relationship with the Salvation Army as well.
No, I know that, and I- I appreciate that very much.
That we're very happy with. I'll- I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
I have a motion second. Richard, are your questions all answered?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Ms. Betancourt. Anything further? Call for a question?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Mayor Pro temp Vice Chair Betancourt?
Yes.
Council Members Director Carrillo?
Yes.
Loa?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
And Commissioners Brown?
Yes.
And Fragasans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, so that completes our Housing Authority items. So Housing Authority, you are excused, and thank you for your service.
Yeah, not yet.
Alright, so our next item is the uh City Council uh Consent Calendar. That's Items Number fifteen-one through fifteen billion, where are we at? Fifteen, fifteen-twenty-four, okay?
It's a healthy consent calendar.
Yeah, I tell ya. So uh anybody wanna pull anything for further discussion? We'll pull fifteen-four to get the balance of the uh explanation on a fireworks booth issue there.
I need to pull fifteen-five.
And uh Ms. Betancourt would like fifteen-five?
Yes.
I would, I would like to uh pull fifteen point one and fifteen point three. And then one additional one here. I guess it's just those two.
Mr. Carrillo?
I'm good right now, pulling everything, thank you.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to uh move the rest of the items.
Um I want uh fifteen-eight, I'm pulling fifteen-eight and fifteen-eighteen.
I second my motion by Mr. Bishop.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bishop for, to approve the balance of the consent calendar, and a second by Mr. Carrillo. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro temp Betancourt?
Yes.
Council Member Carrillo?
Yes.
Council Member Loa?
Yes.
Council Member Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye. Alright, let's look at, uh let's go down this numerically then, fifteen-one. Uh Mr. Loa, did you have a question on that, or did you?
Yeah, I just have a question, uh and I did talk to the City Attorney about this earlier. I was just wondering uh about the uh purpose of having the Prince William uh County contract. He was explaining to me that it's a piggyback process, I'm just trying to understand how that works.
So this is cooperative contract with Amazon. Uh we actually uh uh spent roughly a hundred and ten thousand dollar on PPE uh for this particular uh order. Our regular uh supply order is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and a hundred and ten thousand dollar portion of PPE is uh paid for by American Carrot Parking, so it's not coming out of general fund anyway. Uh so that's pretty much uh I guess uh summary, do you have?
And I'm just wonder, just wondering the relationship of the Prince William County memorandum, negotiations, and contracts, and uh and it, and the piggybacking process that I guess is going on here for the uh products that were delivered to the city through Amazon.
Yes, uh that cooperative already negotiated by that particular county, and the pricing structure negotiated under that cooperative already well-established. So we're just uh taking advantage of that, uh the pricing um uh really uh the-
It's like, it's like, an economy of scale?
Yes, um also, if you recall, last year, um the availability of the product was, was in question as well. So it wasn't just a pricing issue. Uh the, the Amazon was pretty much the only uh source available to acquire some PPEs for X number of months um last year. So this is really um, I think it's um absolute and ultimate uh resources we had to tap into last year.
Okay, so we're basically using the uh agreements that were negotiated by Prince William County, and we essentially uh went on top of that or came off of that one?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, uh unless there's anyone else have any questions, I'll move to approve this item.
I'll, I'll make a second, I'll also make a comment that um it's not unusual for local governments uh to have agreements with vendors. As I believe we have an agreement with Staples, and so does LA County, to buy items at uh larger bulk items at discounted prices, so this is all a pretty standard issue.
Yeah, the question, the question, the reason I'm raising the question is because this is another governmental entity, so I understand it now, I thank you.
Okay, um so uh fifteen-one, we have a uh motion by Loa, second by Bishop. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro temp Betancourt?
Yes.
Council Member Carrillo?
Yes.
Council Member Loa?
Yes.
And Council Member Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye. So we got fifteen-three, Mr. Loa, on that one?
Yeah, on that one, um I think it's a great report, it- it sounds to me like uh this company, Cohen and um Corin and Cone are really on top of the game in terms of property tax consulting and auditing. And I just wanted to make sure, I- I didn't see anything there in reference to AV, Measure AB, but I'm sure that that's part of uh what they're going to be auditing. Uh are they going to do any kind of a breakout of uh uh the taxes that are being raised by Measure AB? Are they gonna do it in a separate accounting? I'm- I'm assuming they will be, I just wanted to understand.
Alright, uh this uh this particular item is related to the property tax uh services they provide, which is different from the sales-
Oh, the sales tax.
Yeah, uh so these are just for, just uh exclusively for property tax.
Okay, alright.
So uh to your point, to your point, uh we'll have a separate report for AV measure for- So, uh, to your point, uh, we'll have a separate report for AV measure for sales tax agreement as well.
Okay, all right, well, I'm moving to approve that.
You know what, why don't we go through these and then, and if everybody's, uh, okay with them, then we can just do one vote for the balance of the items. If that's okay with everybody else, is that, is that okay?
Mayor, I think there's a, uh, conflict, so, right.
Oh, all right, all right. So I have a motion by Loa, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bishop? Okay, City Clerk, you're up again.
Mayor Protem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfauer?
Aye. 15-4, you're up.
Clarification, I'll address the DBA, so doing business as. Um, so as it was said, the Antelope Valley Chamber of Commerce has filed a DBA to operate under the Palmdale Chamber of Commerce. Now, it's a little confusing, that's why the memo was presented to council. They are, um, subleasing from the Black Chamber, and, um, they meet all the standards per the municipal code as required. Happy to answer any additional questions or anything that you need.
Anybody else in the council, any other question? No? Okay, and I noticed too that we circled.
I do, I, this is, this is one.
Yes, sir.
So if the chamber was, they saw, or they got joined, is the chamber then coming back to, uh, a separate, kind of a separate organization? Because what Mr. Don Hopperich mentioned, and I, I do agree with him, I mean, it is a chamber that got together with another chamber, and now we're seeing that they do have another DBA. Are they coming back in business as a different name, or why do they have a separate DBA? So there's no clarification on that?
Sure, we also have Mark Hamstree here with the Antelope Valley Chamber of Commerce, who can address any additional questions. I'm not sure why they have a DBA, but that is a right that they, um, can pursue. They are merged, though.
Right, I know sometimes different groups do it, and I know we did it when we were doing a booth. We had a separate DBA, but it was for tax and liability purposes, so we could obtain the, um, uh, file separate filings and get obtained separate insurance, uh, with a, with a separate DBA. So I know we did, we, we filed under a DBA as well.
There's various reasons that companies do it.
So some, they, they could.
We got Mark, Marcus coming up right now, and he can explain their logic here.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, just to shed a little light on you guys. So for about 73 years, um, since the Antelope Valley Chambers of Commerce was incorporated, the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce, which I'm sure all of you heard about, and yeah, I think you all think it's an actual entity out there and a, and a business that's been working. It's been a DBA of the Antelope Valley Chambers of Commerce for the past 73 years. We just added the Palmdale Chamber of Commerce to that organization. So we have, the Palmdale Chamber of Commerce is a DBA under the Antelope Valley Chambers of Commerce. We operate out of the office. Um, during COVID, we don't staff it, we work at home or we work out of our other off, branch office. Um, we do have, um, a pretty well split of members between the two organizations. Um, and also a lot of our members, um, not only were they members of both chambers before, so we've helped them by reducing their costs, but also a lot of our members, um, may have a Lancaster address, but, but completely serve Palmdale. Um, we just talked with Chelsea, who is here, with Salvation Army, that's a Lancaster address. AVTA is a Lancaster, uh, Lancaster address. AV College is a Lancaster address, although they have a satellite and they have a business and they have a, a campus in Palmdale. Um, Wingstop has a Lancaster address, but they have restaurants in Palmdale. So if you would take all those out, we're, we're split 50/50. We have the numbers there and, um, we are a growing organization here in the Antelope Valley, in Palmdale. We are, you know, we're doing ribbon cuttings in Palmdale and, and everything else, so we're, we're an entity here.
Mark, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So what's the address, what's the address of the Black Chamber of Commerce that you're using?
What is the, the?
The address.
The address for the Palmdale Chamber is the, um, was it 817Q9 Palmdale? And that's, we've been there for, for years. Uh, we just went ahead and, um, consolidated with, in our, in our sharing space with the, um, Antelope Valley Black Chamber of Commerce. So our, our office is the front one on the window.
When they moved in there, I remember having a whole discussion that, that's not just the Black Chamber office, it's not just Hispanic Chamber office. That's the chambers offices.
There's three chambers that share that same address.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Council, anything else from the Council?
I, I do appreciate the cause for concern. Uh, my, my main points are, you know, making sure that ultimately the city of Palmdale benefits from this because this is, uh, something that is, uh, being allowed by us and being, uh, allowed in our community. So therefore, we should ultimately share the benefit. And, um, uh, the other thing is to make sure that we're following all the rules, we're following our rules, and we're respecting the process that's been put out there, and that would be my question to the city attorney, is to making sure, like, are we doing everything correctly? From what you heard and what you've seen, is this being handled the way that our rules, uh, specifically say? Cause I know we've gone over this a couple of times. Um, this isn't the first firework discussion, certainly not going to be the last, but that's, that's my primary, those are my primary concerns right now.
Sure, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, as it relates to really the input that I provide here, it's, I'll just.
I think, Mark, I think you probably, thanks.
I can describe and define the rules, and then staff makes a determination whether or not an agency has, fits within those rules. And if, I mean, there's four, a nonprofit organization primarily for youth, veteran, patriotic welfare, civic betterment or charitable purpose, has its principal meeting place in the city, or draw more than 50% of its active members from within the incorporated city, have been organized and established in the area that is within the city for at least 12 months preceding the filing and have at least 20 members. At least staff represented that they've made that finding, and if that finding is, is their finding, then that would comport with law.
Okay, in all conforms to everything. Um, ultimately, I think, you know, respect of the process is, um, the primary thing when we look at stuff like this. Anybody else?
Okay, and Mr. Loa?
Yes, um, first of all, I think that, uh, there's, there's adequate, um, support for this, uh, in the staff report. Ms. Saxon made a, uh, presentation, and so has the Palmdale Chamber. But over, uh, and above all of that, I think that we are all part of, um, a historic process really to unify our ballot. And, uh, and I think this is part of that. I mean, we, we've seen it with the Board of Realtors, uh, that began, that became, uh, the Greater Antelope Valley Association of Realtors, where previously it was Lancaster, Board of Realtors, Palmdale, uh, Board of Realtors and so on. And we're doing that at various levels, and, and this is part of it, and I think that there is certainly, uh, compliance with, uh, the requirements for Palmdale Chamber to be part of, uh, the fireworks booths that, uh, that we have here. I fully support this, uh, and, uh, but I think it also serves a greater purpose, as I pointed out.
Thank you. Ms. Bettencourt?
I would move to approve the item.
I'm, I'm working my way down the dais, so we'll, we'll, we'll hang on to that motion for one second.
No, I agree, I'll, I'll second his motion.
Okay, all right. So the only other one that, uh, I had, uh, questioned about, and we've talked about it before, uh, is a Little Rock band deal. I think that, uh, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure if they're actually meeting in the city of Palmdale, if they're out there, and I know you guys have gone through this. I want to just, first of all, remind everybody that there's X amount of fireworks are going to be sold. When we had 54 booths, you still sold X amount of fireworks. There's 32 booths. There may or may not be enough product to, to meet that demand, but, um, uh, it'll get sold. But I want to remind all the organizations that we were serious about the fact that you need to demonstrate how this is benefiting the city and the residents of the city of Palmdale, okay? And, um, I sensed that that's, wasn't able to be met with a number of these groups. I got a call from the, one of the, um, uh, fireworks companies about that, that they, they just couldn't, their groups just couldn't, um, make that claim with a straight face, so, uh, that's why they did not apply. So I think that that has, um, that's, uh, distilled it down to more legit groups, and we're going to continue to, to look at that, and we're going to want a very robust and substantive report, uh, from, from these organizations that, that this is how they're benefiting the, the community, the youth, the veterans, uh, or, or some other at-risk or at-need group within the, the community here, so we are going to expect that, so. So I had a motion and I had a second by Loa and by Bettencourt. Ma'am?
Mayor Protem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfauer?
Aye, right, um, okay, and 15-5, Ms. Bettencourt is going to step off the dais because, uh, she works for the Sheriff's Department here. Uh, do we have, um, uh, any particular item on this or just a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, for 15-5. Any further comment? Uh-oh, I, I, I missed something. Yeah. You may skate, Ron, you may not have to, you may not have to make the walk up here, so, all right. So 15-5, you got a motion and a second, you got those?
Yes.
Okay, call for a question?
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfauer?
Aye, thank you. 15-8. So Chuck, I, uh, I pulled this one, as you know. I'm warning you, I'm going to do this. Um, so my, um, one of the questions has come up because we, we had a little bit of a, um, a, a question came up about some of these districts tend to be a little bit complex and you don't know sometimes where the lines are. Um, I went through that thing and maybe I just wasn't reading it. But I understand that there's 20 no-vote LMDs out there. A handful of them were, were the HOA took it over, but that doesn't account for the rest of them. Do we have that list? Uh, because I know that, um, I've gotten questions on a couple of neighborhoods, and I'm going to call, oh, that, that neighborhood voted itself out. And I think perhaps Ms. Bettencourt has gotten a similar call too, because we were talking about that the other day. So can, can we get that list so that we can better understand when a community, and somebody's driving down the street and they go, that really looks bad over there, and I, you know, and then I get a nasty email, how come you aren't taking care of it? Because the neighbor said no, but, and the assumption is you're going to take care of it, or you're going to form your own group, or you're going to come out there with your mower, or whatever, but you said no, and, and legally, we can't do anything, so.
Yeah, no, that's correct, and, and I'll, I think I'll do one better, is we'll get a map to go along with the list so that you could actually have a map.
I was going blind trying to say a little map.
Right, yeah, it's, and we can put that, we can put that up on the website, I think. If, if, uh, I think that's a good idea, we can put that up so you can refer people to it.
And it's not a matter of public shaming, but I get, a lot of these neighborhoods have turned over, and they don't know that the people that lived there before had voted it out, and they're just going, why does, why does the street outside my place look lousy, you know?
Yep.
Why's it, you know, why is this just a dirt ditch?
Sure, yeah, we definitely, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have a question on that item?
I, I have, I have a question with Mr. Hefner, um, is there any way that these particular districts could be, uh, could revisit the issue, could that, uh, question be posed to them again?
Yeah, I think, act, actually, I think we did, because I was on the council at the time, and I thought you were, might have been here in that, that round, but they'd have to do a petition, because we, we put it through three rounds and we said the policy was, you could come back in, but you got to get the petition to ask the city to put it back out for a vote. So yes, there, there's a mechanism out there.
There is a process for that, and, uh, it's something that we are looking at. As a, right now, we have a consultant doing an audit of the existing system and then making recommendations. One of those is to, to do a citywide LMD, or they would call it actually a CFD. So we're looking at a lot of other options, and at that time, people would be, be able to opt in and create a district of their own, or possibly join the citywide district.
It's good.
So, yeah, there's a, there's a process.
So then the process allows then for, uh, residents that want to opt out of an LMD and create a CFD, but if that's not working well, then do they still have a chance to come back to an LMD?
They could, and, you know, that's something we're looking at as whether or not, because right now we have 248 districts. Each one of those takes a process of going out, talking to the community about whether or not they want to be included. So if you had to go to, let's say it's 20 districts, staff current capacity, we could maybe do two or three, four a year at the most. Even using the consultant to do some of the work of the, of the public outreach and the, and the tracking and everything else. It's a, it's a very tedious process, and so that's why we thought that potentially going to that citywide CFD would be one time, and then you would somehow meld all these districts into one, possibly.
And then our entire city would be beautiful.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
So, uh, so it is something we're looking at, it's very tedious.
The risk is on some of these, though, is, is that you have some large landholders with a lot of parcels to get a lot of votes, and that happened on the, um, I know on the vector control district. That's why the Eastside of Palmdale has limited, uh, vector control services, because a large landholder out there voted it down. So that's why you, you get minimal, uh, uh, level of service for that, because the district was voted out by a large corporate landholder out there.
Right.
So, okay.
There's a point to do, when you look at the potential, uh, temporary track map, if it's one parcel, 100% voting, that parcel owner creates the LMD. And then however many parcels were created, then everybody put an LMD already, because just one property owner.
Right, yeah, that, that's the advantage of getting that done early.
Yeah.
Great point.
Uh, so just for purposes of the public to understand the difference between an LMD and a, and what is the other word?
CFD?
Community facilities district.
So, can, can you kind of, actually, explain what the differences are?
Well, the CFD is, is, um, is actually, it's a little bit more, it's easier to use more on a larger scale. So the LMD is a public benefit for a, a smaller area, and the developer will go through a process when he's first developing the track. He will initiate that proceedings to have the LMD, and he owns all of the parcels, so he, you easily get more than 50%. Um, the CFD likewise goes through that same process, but it's, it would be more on a, on a citywide basis.
And there's a little more flexibility for what they can.
There is, there is more flexibility.
Pay attention to, right?
You can include other, other things into it, and I, I'm not sure I would recommend that we include drainage and some of the other things, that the consultant is just throwing things out there as far as potentially possibilities that we could look at and think about, but that's true, you, you can add other things other than just landscape into a CFD.
Yeah, I don't think including drainage would be a good idea.
Laura?
The other advantage is probably cost-effective to have a CFD over, you know, having so many, couple of hundred different districts.
Just the, yeah.
So the, the auditing of each particular district has got to be more expensive.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
250 districts, you can imagine the, the, the nature of how tedious that is to go through each one.
Ms. Bettencourt?
Yeah.
You good? Mr. Bishop?
Good.
Okay, I think we've, uh, run through the dais here, um, anybody want to make a motion to approve this item?
I'll move to approve.
We'll approve 15.8, Loa.
I'll second it.
Okay, Loa and Bishop. City Clerk?
Mayor Protem Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hopfauer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, 15-18, so. I, I just kind of found it ironic that it was manhole adjusting, but every manhole I drive over after it hits my street, it feels like a speed bump, so.
It is.
If you, if you, if you want speed bumps, let them resurface your street. So this Cape Seal project, have we got a, have we got a better, uh, process in place? Because if you read what it says it's supposed to do, and with, with some of the neighborhoods, uh, I, I know we've been very aggressive on this, and it's not the, every five years, every street gets touched because we lost redevelopment, and I've had to explain to people that's why we, we've had to prioritize neighborhoods and we tried to eventually get to everybody.
Right.
But, uh, a little better, uh, we've got a system to better track the work and things like the crack sealing and stuff like that?
Well, yes, the crack sealing, I mean, it would be, as you alluded to, the budget that we have, um, ideally, you go through and you would grind off, I mean.
Right.
All two inches or four inches even, and then you'd put down new asphalt or you'd cold mill and, and do what's called a.
This is an intrudal thing, so to extend the life of the street before we have to do that large-scale grinding, correct?
That's correct, yes, and it's not necessarily, some of the bigger cracks, now, they go through a process where they, they go through with a weed killer, they kill the weeds, then they go back in, they blow out the cracks, the dirt, the dust and the dirt and everything else, so that the, uh, the, uh, emulsion actually flows into the cracks. But the biggest benefit is all the little cracks, the spider cracks between the bigger cracks, those get filled in. Those are the ones they don't translate up, you would possibly get some translation of the cracking back up through that emulsion that you put on the top, this chip seal. So there, it's not perfect, but it does extend the life significantly, five to ten years before you would actually have to go back in and, and do a full grind and overlay. And so, and, and to do that on a citywide basis with all, all the local streets that we have is just, it's an impossibility with current budgets.
Well, just, uh, I, I just get reminded every time I.
Yeah.
Drive down a couple of streets that.
Well, if, if you have a problem, because they're supposed to, they're supposed to come back and, and adjust the manholes.
We'll have coffee, and I'll show you.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to take those complaints if people have.
Yeah, I can show you my side of town too, same thing.
To where the manholes have been left down?
Well, no, it's just like whenever speed bump, like he says, that you stick up.
Okay, well, um, we're gonna have to do a little better contract compliance then, because that, uh, that is something that has to be done.
I just wanna make sure that we're getting what we're paying for.
Yep.
You know?
Right.
Residents out there, you know, um, it's, it's a, it's a real inconvenience when they have to go find someplace else and hike out to their car. And I know they do, they do, they do their best to notify everybody to contract and everything, but I just wanna make sure that we're getting the bang for our buck.
Yep, absolutely.
And I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we, uh, we watch that.
And we do do a really good job considering the budget that we have, we do a great job maintaining our streets. If you drive to other cities, um, and other areas, there's no comparison between how good ours are compared to other cities, so thank you for the job that you guys are doing.
Thank you, we try, thank you. No, we've, uh, for, for those of you who, who don't know, we've been doing these Cape Seal projects for a while now, and it's been extending the life of the roads without having to tear everything back up. So it's been saving us a fortune, so in the grand scheme of it, we're able to cover a lot more, uh, square footage for a fraction of the price with the, the way we're doing it, so I appreciate you guys. And, and we do, we do listen, because, I mean, there was a, there was an email, Mayor, that you forwarded me about, uh, gentleman had forwarded it, he's at, uh, I think he was at Q twelve and thirty-fifth, or, uh, east roughly thirty-second, I think it was. This was almost a year and a half ago, so we went and looked at that, and the payment index in that area was very low. It was just something we hadn't focused on, so that's in this plan this year, so.
So just for the public's knowledge, your, your emails just aren't looked at and tossed in a raw file? Uh, we, we, we just bomb these guys with them, we forward them, I respond to all my own, I don't have somebody else answering my emails as the rest of the council, uh, answers theirs. And, uh, we forward them off over to our staff assistant, the city manager, and the department head, and, uh, they look at it, and that, and if you include your phone number and stuff, they, usually within a couple of days, they, the captain is great about this too with the sheriff issues. Um, they get somebody, they'll go look at it, they'll call you up, what exactly's the problem, so they, they know what they're going out there to look for, and, uh, squeaky wheel.
And it may not rise to the level of being in the queue, but this particular one did, and sometime it made a few years later.
And but how many miles a street do we have?
Oh, boy.
Five hundred miles, something like that? The Bruce is nodding furiously, so the guys go out there and they do the spot checks and stuff, and, and, and when you bring a problem to our attention, a pothole or bad drainage issue or something like that, they'll get somebody out there, and it might not have been something that the day they were driving through, they saw or was a problem, so.
Yeah, they might not come through and repave the streets, but they'll be out there with cold patch or whatever they need to do to, to get it, uh, back to flush and safe and operational again.
Yeah, and we really do respond to your emails, e- even if we don't say it out loud to you, um, I, I've even been known to actually take a director and put them in my truck and drive them and say, "This is the problem they're talking about," and showing them in person what, what they're talking about. Because sometimes unless you see it, you really don't understand what the email is trying to say. So I will drive them to that location and go, "This is the problem." So.
You're gonna send an email.
Many directors will, will, will.
I'll take a drive.
I understand you might have, the next contact you might get is, "What time can you meet me out there?" Okay, from one of us, so, alright, I'll move to approve fifteen, uh, point eighteen.
Second.
You have a motion by me and multiple seconds.
Yep.
City Clerk, take your pick.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent, well, I think that took us through the balance of that consent calendar.
Did we take the balance?
I'm sorry?
Did we take the balance on motion?
Yes, we did.
We do, got it.
Okay, we're down to item number sixteen. And, uh, City Clerk? I think this is, um, sixteen one is yours.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna be giving the staff report, or are we?
Yes, sorry, Carrie's gonna come up and.
Oh, okay.
Offer any support for questions that you might have. Mayor and council, um, this item has been, um, a long time coming, and we approved ordinance number fifteen thirty-four forming the Public Art Commission. We went out for, uh, recruitment, and we received several applications. Out of the seven, after review, there were, I'm sorry, we received several applications, but out of the several, we did receive the seven that were required for this commission. And there were four different categories that were, um, the applications were categorized in. The first one being professional artists, we needed two from that particular category. We also needed two from art management and advocacy, and design professionals, we also needed two. And the last section, uh, should be indicated as planning commission, which we did receive, uh, application, um, for that category as well. Um, before you, staff has brought forward the seven names, and we're asking for council to ratify those names. Um, we also have staff here to give any insight or feedback, or answer any questions that you may have regarding the process.
So I did see the, um, public comment regarding this item, and, and it's, it is, it's unfortunate that there's a lack of women on this committee. Um, it surprises me that, um, we have so many committees and, and, and the females of our committee are so poorly represented, so to whoever wrote the, uh, public comments, I, I saw it, I agree with you, and, um, we're gonna have to work harder to, to encourage women to apply for more of our committees and commissions and, and things.
I know that a lot of us made a lot of effort to do that community outreach, to find people, make them aware, uh, through social media. I know that, uh, this has been advertised extensively, uh, on, um, through our social media, at the city as well, and, uh, you know, um, sometimes you can lead that horse to water, but sometimes it's just difficult to either meet, meet it, meet a particular criteria that's necessary, or for someone to have either the time or the passion, uh, they.
It's tough.
May just be busy, you know? And right now, it's terrible, because with everybody either trying to get back to work or trying to avoid going back to work, I think, that, uh, you know.
I just, I just want all the residents to know that I, I always encourage, you know, young women and, and, and girls to always apply to be a participant in our, our public service. And if you're confused or you're shy, come see me, talk to me one-on-one, because I will be glad to encourage you.
Yep.
I have a comment.
Mr. Loa?
Yes, thank you, um, I, I had, I think I had a little bit of a misunderstanding with, uh, with Ms. Smith. Um, I thought all I had to do was submit a name, I did submit the name of Phyllis Fregoso, but, uh, part of the process does involve making an application under HR, and I gotta tell you, I watched one of the applicants, uh, for one of the other commissions, uh, make that application, and that was not an exact, that was not exactly an easy process to do. Uh, but I'm hoping that at some point, uh, the person that I recruited, uh, Phyllis Fregoso could be, uh, added, uh, to this commission. I know she's anxious to serve, and, uh, I believe that Ms. Smith has talked to her already as well.
Excellent, well, perhaps we can, um, I think they got her application today, and they're able to, they're gonna go through it and contact her. So perhaps if she, if, they, if they can, um, uh, get everything clarified and figure out, you know, kinda categories and stuff for the qualifications we put out, maybe we can bring that back at the next meeting and get her in there as a, uh, as an alternate then.
No, well, this is for the, uh, public arts.
Right.
Talking about here, and, and so, uh, it looks like we actually need eight, uh, because, uh, each of the other three, uh, have, uh, two each, but the professional artists only has one, which means we're one shy.
No, professional artists has got two, Singleton and Sharik?
No, uh, Council, Councilman Loa, uh, there's an error on the staff report, there's professional artist was listed twice. On the second one, where there's one name, it should say planning commission.
That's what she.
That's how we got to seven, that's what the, the statute that the council passed called for seven.
Yeah, there's a typo there, and that's, uh, City Clerk tried to clarify that when she was giving her lead into this.
Right, yeah, okay, that's, that's good, I, I appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else? Or a motion?
I just, I wanted to thank all of our applicants for applying, I know, you know, due to outside circumstances and timing, we have different levels of engagement. Sometimes we have, uh, too many people apply, sometimes we have not enough, uh, but I do appreciate every single one of these applicants. I wanted to see if anybody was here in the audience, I know I see, uh, one person, see if they wanna come up and say something, or? No? Okay. I, I was hoping you would.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, these can, these.
Hold on, hold on, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll hold that for one second, because Mr. Bishop is calling people up.
Hi, I'm Brandon Singleton. Uh, I'm from Triforce Burn Company, and I wanna help the community, but, uh, don't really know how, so.
Alright, well, I, I appreciate it, you were actually my selection, and I, I think your art is absolutely amazing, and I'm looking forward to seeing you, uh.
Thank you, you're in my district, so.
Oh, perfect.
Appreciate it.
Want to sit down?
Go ahead.
I, I have such an appreciation for artists, um, I'm, I'm a very analytical person, and I have absolutely no artistic ability whatsoever. I cannot even draw stick people, so, but I recognize beautiful things when I see them, and I have such respect and admiration for what artists do, because it's clearly something I cannot do, so thank God we have people in the world that can, so.
The fun is for analytical people.
Oh, there you go, there it is.
I do just fine as long as I can stay inside the lines.
I can't wait for this to start, so we can start seeing beautiful things through our city, our city really needs it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
Is, uh, Warren, Daryl, Michael, Doug, Nathaniel, any of you here? Or Christine, I think she, she's here, so we all know Christina. Alright, so Mr. Loa had a motion, do I have a second?
Take it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Ben Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on sixteen two, uh, the redistricting committee. Boy, now this is another one we're leading the horse to water, how many times we put this out to?
Well, there was tough requirements on that, I mean, it was very limiting, very limiting.
This is a, this is a tough one.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, the latest?
So before you, you have a revised staff report there? And council, and it includes two additional names, uh, two additional applicants that came in that I did not catch, and they were in, they were submitted very timely, and we, um, I put a revised, uh, staff report before you so that you have an opportunity to, um, hopefully consider those two applications. Um, the two names are Phyllis K. Riley and Sharon A. Thomas Brookens. You have the ability to add them as additional alternates, or if you wanted to, um, modify the existing set of members.
So the staff has recommended the, uh, the grid that's on the top here, uh, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know that, um, uh, Dolores Morris?
Mm-hmm.
She's been having some difficulty in attending the library board, and she's on the library board.
Okay.
Uh, are we sure that she's gonna be in a position to be able to take this on with the intensity of that this is going to entail when the monthly library board, I was talking with some of the library board members about our issue from last month. Just trying to get the genesis of that no-fine thing and trying to just get their thought process on that, and that came up, because when I was asking about what different people thought, and I got, "Well, yeah, we don't know, because she hasn't been here quite a bit," so. So do, do we, have we talked with her, or do we know what's going on, or?
Yes, I've had a direct conversation.
Maybe we should be having that as a private conversation, I'm kind of uncomfortable.
Well, this is a public feeling.
But, I mean, if there's a, a private issue that she's having, this is not the case.
I think it's a simple, yeah, she can do it, or, or she has some.
Well, we should be asking her that, I don't think that our city clerk has the ability to make that decision.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I, I can speak to the fact that I spoke to her direct, and she was, um, interested, and she did apply, and, um, she is very interested in serving the city.
I know she has, and I just wanna make sure that we weren't running into a situation where, where we're, where we're, um, bringing somebody in that, that has maybe a challenge or something to kinda deal with, so. But if, if you've got that, I think we've got some alternates as well that, uh, um, we shouldn't, that, that we have the ability to draw from if necessary, so.
Yes, sir.
I have a, I have a question.
Mr. Loa?
My question is a process, I thought we were each going to have, uh, uh, the ability to nominate two from each of our districts. Uh, is that, am I correct about that? I, I, I thought that's the way the process was gonna work.
Councilmember Loa, um, under the circumstances with this particular commission and the recruitment process, um, we were looking to obtain eleven members of the, the commission. Um, council requested that we go back out for recruitment, because we didn't receive the number of applications, um, that would give the flexibility for council to make a selection. Um, I believe we had thirteen, and we needed eleven, so you made a motion at the, um, May meeting for us to extend this recruitment period, and so where you would normally have received two, that you could like, select from your district, some council members did not have, uh, applicants, uh, from their districts actually apply.
Two applicants, right?
Two applicants, sorry, thank you, Jaycee.
That's the way the, didn't we draw the ordinance, uh, to the effect that each council member, each district would have two representatives that would be nominated by the council member?
The resolution states such that ma- mayor would have the ability to appoint three, and each council member would have the ability to appoint two from their own district if there were applicants who actually applied within your district. Uh, some, some did not receive any, some had more than one, so we provided that information to you in advance of the council meeting, so you had the ability to, to make that selection from what was offered.
Right, well, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, because I, I do believe that, uh, I, I see that one of the persons that I would nominate, Aldro Harris is on there. Um, the other one that I would be nominating is Phyllis Riley, uh, to be, uh, to be from my district, which is District Two. Those would be my appointments, I would like to, uh, see that, both of those got on there.
Okay, so let's, let's make a note of that.
Pardon?
We'll make the note of that. For, for, in those.
Would it be appropriate for me to make a motion that, uh?
Well, I, I think, why, why, why don't we try something here, let's go down and see, you know, if. Like, you, you have one from your district, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, let me try something here and see, see where we can get, okay, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have, you have your appointee, uh, uh, Benny Torn, right? Okay, so that leaves a, um, District One, we have one, um, potential vacancy for that, let's see what happens here. Um, Ms. Ben Court, so I see that you had, uh, everybody applied from your district, you had, you had quite a few, are there, do you have two primary appointees from your district that you'd like to nominate this time?
I already submitted my information to the city clerk. I don't have the names in front of me.
What's that?
I don't have the names in front of me.
Okay, well, the, from district, from your district, there was Patrick Colson, the, uh, Neshan Mitchell, and Antonio Ortega.
And Brandon Reed.
What's that?
If, if I don't, I don't have the resumes in front of me right now, so I honestly, I'm very tired, I've worked thirty hours straight.
Right.
So.
You, so what two do we?
What two did I pick?
Yeah.
A, a city clerk should know. It was, it was people that I did not know. It was, it was people that I did not know.
I'm sorry, I actually don't have those names right off the top of my head, I received, um, your appointments all separately, uh, via email.
Yeah, sorry about that, you guys, I'm just really tired.
It's okay.
And, and I read every one of the resumes and I go with whoever I think is most qualified, so.
Right.
Mayor, do you have the list of the districts?
Yes.
By district?
Yeah, I, I wrote them down on the, on the sheet here.
Okay, if you could provide that to the Mayor Protim, maybe she would.
Yeah, that's right.
The, the top two selections.
See, if you want to, this is for the redistricting. Oh, I have a new one from my district too, Sharon Thomas Brooks is from District Three.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. Did we get a copy of her resume also?
Yes.
So I'll review them and, um, I'll have to let you guys know.
JJ, is this gonna really mess us up if we come back with this at, to the, at the, uh?
Team?
Um.
It'll put us into thirty days behind, right?
No, no, we, if we come up at, at the, at the.
We can come back and.
What?
Uh, uh, this is.
Are we gonna table it over, just because Loa wants to add Phyllis, let's?
No, and, and, and also I'm gonna, I'm gonna encourage, uh, Mr. Bishop to find a second person, so the original, I mean, we've got a good group in here right now.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I think that we just, we just need to, we just need to filter it out, I think that the two week.
Cause I see that I have, I have Nashawn and I have Patrick Colson from District Three.
Well, I'm also concerned that you have a.
But I did not know that we had a female that applied.
Yeah, I'm concerned that, that you have a chance to review that additional application for your district.
Right. So that you get Sharon a, a good, uh, shake in her, Jay, can, unless there's strong feelings on us, can we, can we come back at this in two weeks?
I, I will, I, I'll tell you this, this is a council, the, the staff does not want to, this is a council redistricting.
And, and I.
I'm very sensitive to trying to drive this process, so we, we can come back on the fifteenth.
And I appreciate that the city clerk was trying to fill in the blanks, but, you know, with this, this staff.
But I, I would just ask two things, one, we do not extend this application period, the, this cut off from last Thursday.
Pay to get off the ladder, three weeks, right.
Yeah, we will, uh, provide everybody yet again, the fifteen resumes, we got two late Thursday, so we'll provide those to everybody. Uh, but I would just ask that we get your two nominees by the end of, you know.
And, and I guess what kind of confused me too is when you look at the, um, number two, it says Brian, number one, he's, I, I thought those were districts, Brian's my district, District Three, so.
Right. Right, and I, I, that's why I went through with the numbers next to here, so.
I, I, I believe that this was just nu- nu- numbering the.
Okay.
Alternates.
I wasn't sure if those.
Cause first we had, uh, t- and we, and we did not eliminate anybody, just because staff did not want to eliminate. This isn't, this is an option presented to council, but this is your appointed committee?
Can I ask the council to please take a look at the, uh, uh, all these qualified people that are on here?
Mm-hmm.
Please provide your two primary appointees to the city clerk by the end of the week.
I can do that right now on mine.
And, right, but, but this way, everybody gets them in and, uh, from each of your districts, and Mr. Bishop can get a few more days here and shake the tree over in, uh, in, uh.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're opening it back up.
We're not opening it.
We're, we're just gonna take the additional time to the fifteenth to review.
Well, we, we don't have a second person from his district then.
I can choose.
No, no, uh, he can pick somebody from, from the other list.
Okay, you were just arguing that we had to have two from each district.
Right, that's what he said.
No, I was arguing that, but what I'm saying is that he can nominate somebody from, uh, another district, it doesn't have to be from your district. Uh, and, uh, so, but there's fifteen names on here that, that could be pulled from, all I was saying is that each council member should, uh, nominate two persons. I think it ought to be from the, from their district, but it doesn't have to be from their district.
Well, it, it should be from the district because we're talking about redistricting, so we want people that have a vested interest in the districts that they live in, so that they can reconsider the boundaries of, of where they're living, so it makes sense to have the people.
Whatever you guys wanna do, but let's just get it back, get your, get, please respond in an email, so there's no question about who you wanted, and get it to the city clerk by the end of the week. And then she will redistribute that back out and then based on that, your appointments, then I will fill in the blanks for the, uh, uh, for the other vacancies then, okay?
So you're gonna fill in, uh, okay.
I get, uh, the other three spots on there, you guys get the first.
Sure.
Order it is, so.
Okay.
Eight, yeah, eight, and then I, I fill in the last three, okay?
So we're tail, we're tailing this matter then, we're tailing it.
Yeah.
All right, we'll just table it and, uh, until.
Do we need a motion to table?
Do we need, okay, do you?
Okay, I will make a motion to table till the next meeting on the fifteenth, so we have a chance to re-review the already submitted applications. And submit those to the city clerk by this Friday.
Perfect, thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, city clerk?
Mayor Protim Betancourt?
Yes.
Coun- Councilmember Caddiel?
Yes.
Wake up.
Noticing a pattern here.
Don't mean to wake you.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Top participation.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion carries.
All right, sixteen three, um, um, District Three and at-large planning commissioners, I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion to multiple seconds?
Second.
That would be for Avery and for Name it.
Awesome, and I just wanted to clarify that the terms expire, uh, they will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, not twenty twenty-two as referenced there.
I go, okay. Artie?
Mayor Protim Betancourt?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Caddiel?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Hi.
Thank you.
Excellent, so we have, uh, public hearings around the number seventeen, we're flying right through, you know what, before we hit that public hearing, let's take a quick break, okay? For those of us that are along.
Public hearing, public hearing seventeen point one. Housing Coordinator, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Staff is requesting a public hearing to hear public comments on the draft twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two action plan. Programming two million, two hundred and twenty four thousand, a hundred and fifteen dollars in consolidated planned funds. Review and approve the the action plan, authorize the city manager or his designated to make necessary changes and submit the action plan. Execute documents related to the submission and also execute sub-recipient agreements. This item may look familiar, it was originally scheduled for the May council meeting. And I'd like to note that on May nineteenth, the city did receive notification from HUD. That with the allocation formula that HUD used was slightly incorrect. And so we've actually received an additional twenty two thousand, three eighty seven. So some additional funds since the last time we were supposed to be scheduled. These funds are reflected in the staff report and the draft action plan that you have before you. I just wanted to make notice that we did receive additional funds. We made a quick pivot and have incorporated those things. So for fiscal year twenty twenty one through twenty twenty two, the new total amount of CDBG funds. The city will receive is one million, four hundred and five hundred and forty one thousand, five sixty one. We are also recommending prior year funds of a hundred and four thousand, eight oh seven for the CDBG program. And then home funds, the allocation for this year is five hundred and seventy seven thousand, seven forty seven. The projects that are being proposed are also in your action plan, or sorry, in the staff report as well as the draft action plan. It includes projects like the infrastructure project on Q twelve between tenth and twelfth street. It includes ongoing activities like saves and fair housing as well as strengthening partnerships with economic development. To create additional projects for local businesses. Staff has complied with noticing requirements for the city's citizen participation plan. We recommend everything that's in the stock report and I'm here for questions.
You think that we'd get, you think we'd get additional funds if we postponed it once again?
No, I was gonna make a joke about that earlier.
Alright.
I think we're probably at the max right now for this action plan.
So we're also, part of this money will be going to help people that have rental issues, right? Rental assistance?
So we do have funds allocated for rental assistance programs. It's not specific to this, the funds that are being proposed for this particular action plan. Those funds actually are part of a separate allocation called the CDBG COVID funds. On page two of your staff report, you'll see that we received over one point nine million dollars in COVID related funds for programs like. So far, we've, we've programmed a rental assistance program, the business assistance program, some additional funds that saves, things of that nature.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's, that some of this money helps protect people from ultimately ended up homeless. We've gotta do whatever we can to make sure people stay in their homes and stay housed.
A lot easier to keep them from going over the edge than just pulling back up.
Yeah, keep them in their homes before they get on the street, so yeah, I, I hope that some of the money can be used for that.
Absolutely, I think the things that's in this action plan that speak to that. In addition to the other programs that I just mentioned are the services available through saves on an ongoing regular basis. As well as the fair housing counseling that contract allows for free legal services to our residents who need it.
Thank you so much.
Alright, so we'll open a public hearing, City Clerk, do you have any, anything queued up? IT?
No, sir.
No? Alright, anybody in the audience wish to address this particular item? Item seventeen point one? Otherwise, motion to close public hearing, please?
Move, so moved.
Have a motion and a second somewhere here between Bishop and Benton Court, I mean Loa and Benton Court, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafalar?
Yes, so the public hearing is closed. Staff recommendations approved, the recommendations and findings as listed in the staff report relative to the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two action plan programming. Do you have a motion?
We do, we do approve the item seventeen point one.
Mister, Mister Loa? Second by Ms. Benton Court, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafalar?
Yes. Seventeen two, public hearing and adoption of proposed ordinance number fifteen sixty four. Amending the Palmdale Municipal Code Title sixteen subdivisions, Mister Heffernan?
City Mayor, Member of the City Council. Review of the city's Title sixteen subdivisions is required from time to time. And in order to maintain compliance with changes to state law relating to the subdivision of property for development. This section of the code was last updated in nineteen ninety six. Staff engaged a consultant specializing in these matters and performed an analysis of the code and developed required updates. Sample of the changes, it would be a definition of condominium, definition of development advisory board, updated requirements for parcel maps. Exploration of tentative maps and timely filing for final and parcel maps. Lot line adjustments, certificates of clients by the city engineer, et cetera. In addition, they assisted in the preparation of a city specific guide for, for the public entitled guide for preparation of final maps and parcel maps. Which will assist developers, surveyors, or engineers to review it during the review process. And staff recommends that the city council adopt ordinance number fifteen sixty four, amending Title sixteen of the Palmdale Municipal Code.
Check it out, read the title of the ordinance into the record, please, sir?
Certainly. Ordinance number fifteen sixty four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palmdale, modifying Title sixteen subdivisions of the city code. Regulating the design, improvement, and survey data of the subdivision and certain other divisions of land. And the form and content of the tentative, final, and parcel maps thereof.
Thank you, sir, do I have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Benton Court made the motion?
Second, Loa.
Mister Loa, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafalar?
Right, okay, so we're gonna open a public hearing, City Clerk, did you have any public comments on this item or anything queued up? Okay, IT now?
Not at this time here.
Anybody in the audience which should address this item, otherwise a motion to close public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion to close.
Ms. Benton Court?
Second.
And second by Mister Bishop. He beat you to it, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo? Councilmember Carrillo, thank you, Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafalar?
Yes, so the staff recommendation is to adopt ordinance number fifteen sixty four, do you have a motion?
Yes, Loa, approved.
Loa and, second by, I think Bishop may beat you to that. Alright, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafalar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at eighteen new business, eighteen point one, Mister Kang?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So eighteen point one, staff are asking City Council to approve resolution number CC twenty twenty one dash zero five four. This resolution is authorizing issuance of the Palmdale Community Facility District number oh five dash one. We talked about CFD earlier. This is for Trade and Commerce Center area, twenty twenty one special tax refunding bond. This does not affect general funds. Will save a lot of money for business and property owners in this district. Joining us tonight are our Farm Council, Paul Kinnick, and Municipal Advisor Suzanne Harold, but she may not be available, but, oh, she's just, she just got off. So Suzanne, if you wanna start first, maybe you can explain further?
Certainly, good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. The Trade and Commerce Center issued a series of CFD special tax bonds in two thousand and five and two thousand and seven. It was about two point four billion outstanding. The city has the opportunity to refinance those and reduce the interest rate by about three percent from an average six and a quarter to about three point four percent. This is gonna save or reduce the taxes that are levied on those properties in that CFD by about two hundred thousand dollars a year. And so we're hoping that that helps those business owners and, and for those properties that aren't developed, helps those owners develop those properties. And so that's the action before you is to approve all the financing documents to complete that transaction.
So the staff report shows that if we do this, that we'll actually be saving the city about two point nine million dollars. I think that's a significant amount of money to save and I think it's a good idea.
Saving will be for the business owners and property owners, not the city.
Okay, well, it says refinancing this rate produces a total estimated two point nine million reduction in debt service payments over sixteen years, so.
I think it works a lot like the HOA we have, or I'm sorry, the Melrose, it works a lot like, like the Melrose. So the, the business owners will see that reduction off their property taxes, I believe, is that correct?
That's right, yes.
Okay, got it, yeah, I'm, I'm loving these lower interest rates and I'm sure they're going to too as well. And it's good that we're taking advantage of them now because we're saving business owners in our community thousands of dollars. So thank you for staff for taking advantage of this while we still can. I'll make my motion if, if.
I'll say.
Now's that time, alright.
Cause why would we not?
Yeah, there's really no reason.
Why would we not wanna save our businesses money, right?
Motion, motion to adopt CC twenty twenty one dash zero five four by Mister Bishop? Second by Ms. Benton Court, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Benton Court?
Yep.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafalar?
Aye.
Thank you.
So Paul dropped out of there as quick as he could, didn't he? Thank you, Suzanne.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have eighteen two, and motion carries number eighteen two, adopt resolution number twenty twenty one zero four four. This is proposes to establish Palmdale Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District and Public Financing Authority, Carleen? Oh, you don't look like Carleen, no, no. Oh, it says presented by identity.
Yes, that's fine, it's, it's been a long night, so good evening, Mayor and Council.
Been longer.
We'll, we'll try to make this as quick as possible. So tonight, for your consideration, is the approval of a resolution of intent to establish the Palmdale Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFD. And to also create a new public financing authority, which will oversee the next phase of the EIFD formation process. As we previously discussed, an EIFD is a valuable tool that the city can use to help fund these large scale infrastructure projects that are needed throughout the city. Our goal from the beginning has always been to use this EIFD to help accelerate private sector development. And to attract new investment to undeveloped and underdeveloped areas throughout the city. As part of this process, the city has been working in partnership with the county of Los Angeles. Supervisor Berger and her staff has been very supportive of the city's efforts through this process. And we're talking about a true partnership here, not just in name only, them being, really bringing actual funds to the table to help finance some of these projects. And the Board of Supervisors is actually gonna be taking their resolution of intent at their June eighth Board of Supervisors meeting. Staff believes that moving forward with the EIFD is a great opportunity to eliminate some of the obstacles. That have prevented development from occurring in some of these key areas of our city and help create some great jobs for our community. And to bring some exciting new projects to Palmdale. So therefore, staff recommends the council approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero four four. To establish the Palmdale EIFD and the Public Financing Authority. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and can, can you briefly explain how the, how the consultants came up with the areas? Kinda like the criteria of, of how they, how they found the areas that would satisfy the county's requirements?
Sure, I mean, it was an ongoing discussion with the county and the city and staff to try to identify those areas that needed a little help. That again have been previously undeveloped, you know, so we talked about the corridors between Avenue N and O, Sierra Highway and Tenth Street West. There's been very little development because of a lack of infrastructure in those areas. And as you know, you know, extending a sewer line two miles can cost a project five million dollars and they'll never make that project pencil. So that was one of those, one of the things that we took as we started looking at areas. The other things that we, we looked at undeveloped, underdeveloped areas or areas for long term development. So we looked at key commercial corridors, areas that had maybe some big box retail vacancies where there's could be some potential future partnership. To repurpose those uses to a higher and best use. So again, we took a lot of different information into consideration when we sat down. And we did present these proposed EIFD areas to the county staff, the county CEO's staff, and then had some other discussions as well.
I know they were, one of the criteria was they were looking at areas that, I mean, everybody would like every place in the city. To be covered by this, just like the old redevelopment agencies were.
Yes.
But realistically, we're looking at an analysis that's done by the tax experts as far as. How quickly and how robust the, the return can potentially be in order to move these into other areas?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, so again, when we look at a vacant piece of property, we're only getting so much. And these areas have been undeveloped for, for decades, so it doesn't do us much good having them continue to be undeveloped. So if we were to invest a little bit of, of money to help improve those areas, extend these infrastructure projects there. Then we can get, we can leverage our funds and get a bigger bang for our buck. So yeah, that's definitely one of those things. And the other key thing to, to remember as part of this process is just because an area wasn't specifically identified as an EIFD boundary. It does not limit in terms of some of the other projects that can be done outside of those areas. So for example, if there was a key road project, like the Rancho Vista Overpass or the Avenue M over, overpass project. Extending sewer lines that help improve some of these designated areas, then those projects can still be funded under this EIFD. So it's not just limited to the geographic boundaries of the EIFD. Again, we just have to show that there's a, a direct benefit to those areas in order to, to include those projects as part of the project.
Right, right. Okay, any questions from the council?
Yeah, I've got some questions, so when we create these new districts, somebody's paying for that, it's gonna be the property owners, right?
No.
So how, how does the money get, cause it says that they're gonna send an intent to each landowner within the Palmdale EIFD?
So part of the process, we have to notify those property owners that are part of, in the district.
Okay.
However, there's actually no cost to the property owners, so it's more of a notification process.
Okay.
Letting them know, hey, this is happening, it's gonna impact your property and obviously it's, it's gonna be a benefit to them.
Okay.
But it's just part of the notification process that we're required to, to follow.
And so where does the money for these projects actually come from?
So, so much of.
Tax increment, correct?
Yeah, much of it is kind of like the old redevelopment project areas used to be where we help establish the baseline. That's why the timing is so important to get this done this year. We establish that baseline and then any additional increment that's created from those properties as they're developed would go towards a fund. And then the great thing about it is again, at the county as a partner, right now is we're proposing for them to do a dollar for dollar match. So we're basically getting a hundred percent return on the money that we invest as part of this project.
And then it says that it's gonna create an estimated thirty nine thousand jobs, seven thousand permanent. Are we looking at aerospace jobs, we don't know for sure what kinda jobs, what, what's the proposed, what's, what's the thinking, I guess I should say?
Much of the areas, especially in the areas one and two, you'll notice are built around Plant Forty Two, so the idea.
Yeah, I saw that we have a partner with the, the air hoster.
And that.
These would be support industries.
Yeah, again, we, we can create the mechanism to allow the development to happen, we can't necessarily dictate, but trust me, we'll be out there. Trying to find the, the right types of industries and businesses to come in here. And the one thing that we've gotten actually quite a bit over the last few months is people wanna grow and they need space. The problem is that nobody wants to start from scratch with ground up construction, they want these shovel ready deals. And this is gonna be one step to help us get to that point.
Thank you, sorry for asking so many questions, I just wanna make sure I understand it.
No, no, that's, that's what we're here for, so.
Mister Loa?
I'm good, excellent presentation, Mister Garby.
Thank you.
Mister Carrillo?
Yeah, I have a question, did the county had a preference or how did the county come on board in this project? Doing the match dollar by dollar? Did they specify in specific areas, would they like to see this?
So Councilman Loa, as we had these discussions with the county, we looked at potential infrastructure projects that could be included as part of this EIFD. And they were very excited because a lot of the, the, the projects that we're proposing are again are more regional based. We're talking about the areas around Palmdale Transportation Center, High Speed Railroad, High Desert Quarter, these are things that.
Hospital?
Not, the hospital area that not only benefit us as a city, but obviously the entire region, so they were very excited.
Yeah, I know they were very specific about mountain regionalization on these things.
Yeah.
National impact.
And, and you know, the area around, you know, Lawa and, and Plant Forty Two there, we kind of included. We're kind of pushing that a little bit, I, I think one of the challenges has been that that donut has remained undeveloped. So we wanna try to create ways to make it easier for them to pull the trigger and, and make development happen. So again, that was also part of the conversations that we had with them.
And Councilman, this is still a process, this is, tonight is the next step in the process. There's been no formal agreement with the county. We have a proposal on the, the dollar for dollar match, but they haven't voted on that yet. This is establishing the next step in the process, so.
We gotta get this in because they got their meeting coming up next week.
Yes, and we're under tight timelines as Louis mentioned.
Mister Bishop?
It seems that if.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Things that are available. I understand that they stopped those without process and it's a great idea, great project, great mechanism. To get this projects get started, but it just seems like, like every other opportunity to get funding. For infrastructure that is needed citywide. Again, it just seems to me that it's also a missing mechanism for certain parts of the city. CSZ areas that you mentioned are again on the west side, but again, I just wanna stress that I agree with you for that this time.
And Councilman Carr, one of the things that we will see as, as JJ mentioned is that this is just the next step of the process. One of the, as part of the next phase, we're actually going to be putting together what's called an infrastructure financing plan. Which will help identify all the projects that we would propose to include as part of this project. Now, this is a long term partnership, again, it's a, things much like the old redevelopment project areas, something that's gonna last forty or fifty years. So they're not all gonna be funded right away, but again, we, our goal is to include as many projects as possible. And again, not limiting to just those geographic boundaries, cause again, there are some opportunities there to improve. And extend infrastructure to these key areas where they may not necessarily fall within those boundaries. I know there's been a lot.
Part of it, I think, too, is when we looked at this before, is some of these areas have got some very large parcels under single ownership. And the challenge we run into in, in other areas of town is you've got that same piece of land and it's got eighty seven different people. And sixty four of them live in Taiwan and the rest of them live in, you know, mainland China, you know, so.
You know my.
Trying to grab those owners sometimes gets a little difficult. And then, and you have to also look at the return on, on that investment in order to make that tax increment work on that.
Yeah, and, and again, we try to be as strategic as possible. As JJ mentioned, the boundaries aren't set in stone at this point, there's still flexibility, but you know, we took a really hard look at exactly to address that issues. When there's, you know, fifty one and a half acre parcels in an industrial area, no developer's gonna spend the time to, to acquire and assemble those to give you twenty acres to.
And with, and with the death of redevelopment, we can't do the assemblage of those anymore.
Yeah, and, and that takes time, money, and, and from a developer standpoint, they, they wanna move fast, they wanna have that certainty. So when they, when they go through that process, they know what it is and what to expect. So we try to be as strategic as possible, you know, is there opportunities to improve, of course. But I think we, we did our best approach to try to figure out where are those areas that, that need the help, where can we step in? And we hope that this is really a catalyst so that the areas that maybe around, not, maybe not in those areas, but around it is, you know, once you get that first development going.
Right.
Then it helps bring everything else.
Catalyst. Well, I think that we brought in some real experts that look at this thing from a financial standpoint, and, uh.
Yeah, Cosmon companies and, and their staff have been great.
They're the guys that have been doing it and, and know the drill, so. Uh, Mr. Bishop?
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I, I think this is great. I'm really excited to see what we can do with this. If there ever was a city that could really take advantage of, of program of, or funding mechanism like this, it would be the city of Palmdale, since we've got so much open land and, and in between that is buildings with, uh, more development that doesn't have the utility hookups, so. Um, and this is our chance to get a huge chunk of funding from the county, which we've all been asking for and, and, and always uh, set out to get. I mean, that's the name of the game is.
We'll get it from the county. We get it from.
Right.
The district that we create by it, so.
Right, but it's still a mechanism we're, we're going to use from the county, so. This could be, this could be huge for us. We lost redevelopment, and now we have a second chance to, to push the envelope, be developer-friendly, and, uh, try to get some, kind of, try to get businesses and try to get things moving out here even more, so.
And it makes us more competitive, so we can go after those, uh, federal grants, county monies, because if we know that we have these projects that are shovel-ready.
Let's make sure that, that when we put these maps together, that we also include, and I, I know GIS has some of this, but that we create those overlays, so when people are talking to us and talking to you guys, that you can say, well, not only is this within the EIFD area and we can bring this in, but it's also in an oper- federal opportunity zone, and it's in the state EZ as well, and that kind of stuff, so, uh.
That's a great idea, and I'm sure we'll, we'll, uh, create those maps and have those available.
All right, um, let me see. Do we have, uh, City Clerk, do we have anything queued up with you? IT, anybody?
Not at this time here.
Anybody in the audience looking to, uh, make comment on this? Not a public hearing, it's just new business. All right, uh, anybody else, uh, or a motion on this item, eighteen-two?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, Loa?
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Loa, and a second by Mr. Bishop. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tem Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hafar.
Outstanding, yes.
Thank you.
All right, um.
There's no chance of redevelopment ever coming back, huh?
Well, this is, they, they, they've called this redevelopment light.
I, I know it's light, but.
And it puts the other layer where you got to get the county more, gets more involved in it and everything like this. So, but it's, it focuses on the infrastructure.
Like, no, that's good, that's good, they need it, and I would still love to see redevelopment come back.
Better than a poke in the eye, I guess, as they say, so. All right, um, we have, um, informational report. Uh, any particular highlights? I know most of us have submitted a report, I have my calendar here. Uh, anything, uh, and there's a lot of stuff going on, and I think that anything that you can share on any of your committees that, uh, we can benefit from?
I just want to apologize for missing the Memorial Day service yesterday, um, was it yesterday? I've worked so many hours in a row, I'm kind of, I'm a little tired and don't really know what day it is right now, but, um, I was working and I was not able to pull away to make that, um, ceremony, so I do apologize to everyone there.
We all can't be everywhere.
Yeah, and I, I, I really intended on being there, and I, my, you know, that's something that's very near and dear to my heart, so I want to apologize to the council for not being there, and to the residents and the public for, for not attending that. Uh, my spirit was with you, but I was.
I think we're all.
In the middle of a huge project at work that I could not.
Yeah, I think we all, those of us that were able to get there, we had, uh, some guys who were out of town. I tried to split my time between getting the, beginning of one and the end of the other, so, you know.
I just wanted to apologize.
Any of those, um, agencies, uh, anything to report out from any of those, uh, other than this fact that you attended? And any ones that you went to?
Um, Mayor, um, I just want to thank, uh, Kathy McLaren, who stood in for me at Emerald Valley Transit Authority Meeting the other day. Uh, I want to thank staff here at the City of Palmdale for making it possible for me to participate by Zoom. Uh, that was not an opportunity provided to me at, uh, AVTA. I am traveling, and, uh, will be traveling for a little while. But, uh, I, I just want to thank Kathy for standing in. She's an excellent alternate, and, uh, as, as, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Benton Court would be as well, but, uh, she did attend that for me.
Yeah, no, she, yeah, and then Laura was pretty tied up at work, so I ended up driving. I was on vacation, so I, I drove in three hours for the one-hour meeting, and somehow they couldn't figure out how to get the telephone to work or something, I don't know. But, uh, I'm not going to debate it. We solved it. It was a, wasn't a problem, it got solved. Anything else, any of the meetings or those boards that, that we should be aware of, uh, from a policy standpoint or heads-up deal? Mr. Bishop?
Uh, yeah. I turned in my report, but I'll just go down here briefly. Um, I attended the We Build event over at the Veterans Housing over on Division Street, did a little painting, and, uh, I helped out for a little while. Um, the Peace Officers Memorial Day Event took place out here in Palm Springs Square. Uh, we had a bunch of city staff and, uh, council was out there. It was, uh, nicely attended, and it's nice to see things start coming back and starting to see some familiar faces in the community. I know it's been over a year, even though it feels like much longer than that. Um, it's nice to see things go back online again and start to see people in the community. Um, Sheriff Boosters Meeting, um, we got, uh, some additional equipment for the Lancaster and Palmdale Station, uh, that they requested. AQMD, uh, Air Quality Meeting, we gave away around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants to local businesses to, uh, help clean up the air. We also are talking about putting more air sensors out there in the, in the valley, so we can get better readings on what our air quality is like. I attended a couple of the Walking Wednesdays, uh, one of them was with, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, we did the Dry Town, uh, Walk for Mental Health. That was nicely attended, and it was nice to see the water park open back up again, a lot of energy there. And they, the staff and everyone did a really good job of getting that place, uh, back up to speed and looking like a million bucks. And I know the, 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 the park is like booked for the next two, three weeks with reservations, so it's, it's really exciting to see the water park being used again after so long. Um, I attended a general plow, uh, plan housing meeting, uh, briefings, and, uh, we had the, we had the, um, Staff Grill and Chill Staff Picnic on May twenty-seventh, and then I attended, uh, the Memorial Day yesterday here at City Hall. That's about it. There's more, but I'll keep it short.
Mr. Loa, anything else?
I attended the, uh, the boosters, uh, I've been on the road since, uh, the, the ninth, so, uh, I'm, I'm trying to attend virtually as much as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carrillo?
Nothing for me to report on, but what's in the agenda?
Okay, um, so with a lot of the other guys, I, I attended the Police Officers and Memorial Day, and I also made it to the Antelope Valley Se- uh, Cemetery District, uh, program as well. Um, AQMD, and, uh, like Mr. Bishop said, um, there's money out there. If you've got a business, there's money for grants to replace that equipment out there. So you got old diesel gear, anything like that, uh, whether it's forklifts, uh, farm machinery or trucks, uh, there's, uh, money out there for you. We can probably figure out a way to get it to you. Um, those air, as extra sensors, we're actually looking to do a pretty unique program by actually putting them on the top of our electric buses, because a bus won't affect the readings on these, and they have a pretty broad spectrum of, uh, things they can look at. And, uh, South Coast is looking at, um, wanting to partner on this because the buses, uh, the commuter coaches are going to be going down below, be able to get, uh, much more, uh, uh, accurate and timely readings. Sanitation, ladies and gentlemen, no rate increase. And, um, also we identified, one of the problems we've been finding when we're doing our, uh, desert dumping cleanups is, uh, there's guys that are going out there, whether it's commercial, um, commercial septic guys, or somebody with an RV is going out there and they're, they're dumping their tanks out there in the desert. Uh, and in many cases, that's why I think it might be some commercial is also because just the volume, uh, you know, it's out there creating the Grand Canyon with this sludge. And, uh, it's, uh, there's, there's dump sites all around the valley. Uh, AQMD has got them online, uh, and, uh, the, um, Lancaster site also has a commercial dump station for, uh, has, uh, for, uh, like, uh, septic tanks and things of this nature. There's no reason we dump it out in the desert. That fine, if you're caught, can run into tens of thousands of dollars because it impacts groundwater. So, uh, if you think you're just going to get a ticket, you, you're wrong. It's, it's, uh, it's potentially state or federal action on that, so don't get caught doing that, so don't do it. Uh, Contract Cities and League, we've been really busy with legislation. There's, there were just tons of housing bills that came, came forward, and a lot of them waiting for, to see what's, they're going to, you know, like turn into two-year bills, if the governor's going to sign them, if he's going to veto them, and some of them are not, um, friendly at all to cities and, uh, local control by our communities. So keep it, keep an eye out for that stuff, and I try to keep everybody updated on that. Liability Trust Fund, uh, just a lot more settlements and, uh, looking at, uh, issues with, uh, insurance rates and stuff, so. Those are pretty much the highlights, uh, uh, there's a lot more, and my calendar will be submitted, uh, but I think that we we have that obligation to report on it, not just provide a calendar, so. All right, um, so I think that that takes care of it. City manager, anything?
Uh, just, uh, two things. We are going to, on the Desert Dumping Mayor, we're going to coordinate a meeting with the various desert dumping groups with waste management, with somebody like the officials to try to come up with, uh, an initiative we can bring forward to put more teeth in, uh, our current statutes and come up with more creative things, so we're going to, we're going to solicit ideas.
Stay out of the way of the groups that are doing it, because sometimes the best thing the government can do is stand back.
Yeah. And then the second thing is, just heard today that our Homes for Families Project got awarded a two-point-three-million-dollar Cal Home, uh, grant.
Oh, wow.
So that.
That's a shot in the arm.
Not only is it going to help that project, it's also going to help reduce the, uh, minimum, uh, that's going to lower the salary requirement for some of the veterans, uh, to qualify for those homes, so. Really good news all around from, uh, Cal, Cal Home today, so, just wanted to share that.
Excellent. All right, anything else from the council? Anything for follow-up or new, or motion to adjourn? Yeah, a motion to adjourn without objection, so ordered. See y'all in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Thank you.